Sorry about that, Roger. What was that?
Well, I was just curious with these with the price of home. I don't know if you know the answer to this, but where the price of homes is skyrocketing. Say a home has been assessed for like say 400,000 and it sells for say 650. Is that going to be the new assessed value going forward?
That's a better question for our tax assessor. I'm not even going to venture a guess on that one.
Would the town engineer know that answer?
Not saying anything.
I would hope there would be an adjustment, Roger. I mean, if you think about that, if they don't do a reassessment for a 10-year period, you know, you're potentially missing out on quite a bit in uncollected taxes on that.
Well, I do. I do recall when they were. There was a issue with the waterfront properties a few years ago. I remember Paul Westbrans, who used to be the assessor. He was discussing it with the town council and decided one example down in Higgins Beach where somebody literally overpaid for a house, a property, and he chose not to reestablish a new assessment based on the selling price because he didn't think it would be fair to the other property owners in that neighborhood.
Interesting. All right. So I think we have everyone, right? See, Jen, Roger, Rick, Rachel.
Just trying to figure out if we have Rick Duperry unmuted at this point yet or not.
Hey, Jay, I'm talking. Can you hear me? But I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you, Rick.
Yep.
Oh, hey, good. Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome. All right. So without further ado, let's jump into this. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Monday, January 11th, 2021 Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting. Thank you all for attending. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I apparently have lost all my virtual background, so I'm not. I'm not going to be able to bring up the the flag, I don't think.
That just means you have to sing it now.
Right. Angela's coming in with the save is my guess.
All right now. Oh, I think I am actually going to get it. Here we go.
All right. Join me for rising for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Our next item of business is the roll call. Rachel Hendrickson.
Yeah.
Roger Beely. Jennifer Ladd. Rick Duperry.
Yeah.
Rick Minkin.
Here.
Nick McGee. Here. Sure, that is six of the six. Rick Duperry, you would be a voting member this evening as the first alternate.
Okay.
And our next item is the approval of the minutes November 16th and December 7th. Those were in our packets. Everyone had a chance to review them. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. We'll roll call. Rachel. Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd. Rick Duperry.
Yeah.
Nick McGee. Yes, sure that is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item of business is the election of the officers for Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Do this on an annual basis. And then Jay and Jay and Tody have looked into our language and alternates are allowed to vote in this process as part of selecting the membership to the officers. So without any further ado, their nominations, we'll do it first for the Chair.
Nominate Nick McGee.
Any other nominations? All right, enclosed nominations, all in favor of Nick McGee becoming Chair. Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd. Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, Jennifer. Rick Duperry.
Yeah.
And Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Nick McGee. Yes, thank you. Next, we'll have the Vice Chair. I'll nominate Rachel Hendrickson for Vice Chair.
I'll second her.
Any other nominations? All right, seeing that I'm going to close nominations. All in favor, Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd. Your turn to vote, Jennifer.
Muted.
She's muted. Yeah. Rick Duperry.
Yeah.
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Jennifer, can you give us a hands up if you can hear us? We might be frozen on her screen as a guest. All right. I show that is unanimous. Next is Office of the Secretary. I'll nominate Roger Beely as Secretary.
Second.
Have any other nominations? All right, seeing that I'm going to close nominations, all in favor, Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd. Rick Duperry.
Yeah.
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That is the election of the officers. Next, we have the election of committee appointees. We have Robin rolled off of Long Range Planning Committee. We do have a liaison spot that's available for long-range planning. They meet currently on Friday mornings. Is that correct, Jay? Yeah. Or Jamel? It's Friday mornings from eight to nine. Is it once a month currently?
Well, currently, it's a little more busy where we're in the final throes of the comprehensive plan, but typically it is the first Friday of the month for about an hour and a half or so. Yep, eight to nine thirty or so. Yep.
Jennifer, can you hear us? Good. All right. So with that, we'll just open up nominations for Long Range Planning Committee appointee from the planning board.
And I'll nominate Rachel. And can I give a reason why?
Absolutely.
I just think it's going to be an extremely busy committee going forward. And she's retired, I believe, so I think she'll have some time. I do think it's going to be a very busy, busy committee.
Fair enough. Any other nominations? Okay, I'll close nominations. All in favor of Rachel being appointed to the Long Range Planning Committee. Rachel Hendrickson.
Yes.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd. Rick Duperry.
Yeah.
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
All right, there we go. Rachel is appointed to Long Range. Thank you. Number seven on the business side, Anchild Enterprises LLC requests a site plan review for 79 County Road Assessor's map R15 lot 78. Jamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may recall, this project's located at the corner of County Road and Saco Street and the TBC 2 zoning district. So the applicant's proposing to construct a 1,000-square-foot drive-through coffee shop, and the applicant was last before the board in August 2020. So as the board may recall, the development will result in 130 vehicle trips in the AM peak hour. So given the significant number of trips along a very busy commuter corridor, the town's traffic consultant, the applicant's team, and town staff have continued to coordinate on the appropriate offset improvements for the project, along with the required main DOT traffic movement permit. One of the last remaining elements for discussion is the length of required turn lane within Saco Street. And the TNP will need to be approved prior to the board granting final approval for the project. The applicant has also requested that no funding be provided towards the town multimodal reserve account and of constructing a sidewalk along the property's Saco Street frontage. As you may recall at the last review, the board expressed they were comfortable with this approach, given it would provide opportunities for better coordination and consideration for future pedestrian infrastructure that is consistent with the town's expectations and board practice. Steph would also like to note that the fire department does continue to have concerns about the auto turn simulation provided for a 40-foot-long ladder truck. So the applicant should be sure to coordinate with the fire department as they prepare their next submission to the board. Turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jamel. And for the applicant, Sean.
Yes, good evening, Planning Board. Jamel, I believe there may be Lauren Goodridge may be trying to join as well. Lauren is with the Roma Joes. He is taking over this project. As you may be aware, the former applicant for the project passed away. Lauren is. There he is. He is with the Roma Joes, and they are seeing through the approval of the project. So he has authorization to act and make decisions with the planning board on this project moving forward.
Yes, yes. Can I say something there, Sean?
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm sure everybody's aware of the unfortunate incident that happened to Tanya. And my goal as CEO of the Roma Joes is to make sure that the estate, John and Luke, the two sons, young sons, are taken care of and fully compensated for her heart, all her heart and soul and finances she's put into this project. So my goal is to represent the estate here to get final approvals and transfer this project to a franchisee that will reimburse the estate for everything they've got into this project and the real estate.
Great. Thank you, Lauren.
Yep.
So I'll just, I guess, quickly go down through the staff review comments and provide a brief response to the ones that that we need to respond to tonight. As Jamel said, a lot of these, we're not a lot. Some of these relate to traffic, which we're still working through with the town's consultant, and we can get into those in a little bit more detail. The there is a note here about the stormwater system and to be lined, and it refers to the peer review memo from Woodard and Kern. It appears that they they concur with our design, but they had one comment at the at the end that says, oh, there's a comment about a liner system and also a comment that we confirm that this construction will not result in detrimental impacts to the aquifer protection overlay district. So I guess the two things on that, a liner system is only or a liner in this system is only required if we can't provide the appropriate one-foot separation from either bedrock or the normal high-water table line, which in this case we can. There is no shallow bedrock and the water table is very low in this area. So that's why we don't have a liner. And I'm not sure. We did add note number four to the site plan, I believe, as per request of the board last time in regards to meeting all requirements of the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. Our design meets all the ordinance requirements as far as design and main DEP BNP requirements. So I guess I'm not exactly sure what more needs to be done to indicate that the system will not result in detrimental impacts to the Aquifer Protection District. We're meeting what the ordinance requirements are, and we added a statement to the plan. As Jamel mentioned, we had the comment about the offsite sidewalk and the need to provide funds for that. Could I share my screen, Jamel?
Could be able to.
Yep. So the ladder truck comment, which we will yeah, looks like mine. Here we go. A little slow here. So we revised. We had previously provided a auto turn simulation for the ladder truck, mainly just along the site and then around the store. And the comment we received was they wanted to be able to see that all the way from Saco Street. So we created this sketch today, and we'll forward that on to the town so the fire department can see it. But as you'll see, we're showing the truck coming in from Saco Street, and it can maneuver all the way around the site with cars in the queue, staying within the appropriate lanes and exit. For DOT, one change that we had to make to this plan was a raised concrete radius on here, and that was it was mainly for the delivery trucks that will come to the site, but as you can see, it also helps with the fire truck to be able to access the site. We previously discussed the the need for 10 spaces or we're providing five spaces. And it looks like we just need to add or revise the note that we had on here to make it more clear that the five future spaces are shown in this area. Again, working on the traffic movement permit with DOT and the town's consultant, and I'll get into the consultant memo in a minute. The next landscaping buffering green space comment. So we provided or we've called for a six-foot vinyl stockade fence along this section of the property line. And the staff comment was to extend this fence to the eastern side of the existing shed at a minimum to ensure adequate buffering to the abutting property. So I'm assuming the shed that's mentioned is this one here that actually encroaches onto the applicant property. There's also a large 24-inch pine tree existing in this area. So it's going to be difficult to extend the fence further in this direction. I guess I'm not not completely opposed to adding fence, but I'd rather not take a 24-inch tree down to add some fence in that area. And the shed itself, I would think, would serve as some screening. The house on this lot is more up in this area, so the shed is going to provide some some screen from the headlights. So I guess I'd look to the board to give us some feedback on what they'd like to see there if they think more fence is appropriate or not. The architecture and signage. So I believe I thought we had discussed this proposed plan at one of the meetings, but I'll bring it up again because it wasn't. I think I put the wrong one in the package that went. So this is a proposed sign that the applicant was wanting to use. The ordinance calls for a dark background with lighter lettering, and this sign, it has a lighter background. This is the standard Roma Joes look for their signage. And it's my understanding at night it shows up as a dark a dark background. I'm not sure. I guess based on feedback that if this actually meets the ordinance requirements and and this is what if this would be allowed where the dark is at night, so it's not providing a bright light area. But this is, I guess, what would be preferred as opposed to just the dark background throughout the day. So again, that's, I guess, something feedback from the planning board as far as what we could, what we could do on that. We eliminated the open sign. I think we discussed this at the last meeting, open sign on the eastern facade of the building. We did not provide updated building elevations showing that, but we can we can prepare those if the if the board wants to see a final version of what those elevations look like without the sign in that window.
Sean, I'd just like to add on the signage there. This is designed by Burr Signs. Drew, the owner, has done a lot of signage in Saco and Scarborough. They call this the Dark Sky Initiative. So they're very familiar with producing these types of signs.
Thank you, Lauren. The next one is okay. We provided a detail for the dumpster enclosure, and we'll include it on a full set of plans in the future. That was all for the town comments or staff comments and the Woodard and Kern comments. And I'll just, I guess, briefly go over the the traffic comments because these are probably more of the more serious or major comments to try and resolve on the project. There's no response needed on number one. Number two, there was a. So they requested updated crash data. We provided that, but when we did it, we forgot to, or there was a typo on the table in the document, and we didn't update the dates on that. So the the crash data that we provided is the most current, but the table was, there was a typo on that, so it didn't get updated. So we'll provide that corrected information. And then there was also a comment about not including the Phase 2 improvements as part of our analysis as the town doesn't have plans to implement those yet. We provided those, I guess, as sort of a secondary information. Our submission was our analysis was done without those improvements to show that everything worked, but then we also included the Phase 2 improvements in the calculations to show what those would look like. So if if they don't want to see those, then we can easily just take those out of the information that was provided. We just thought it would be helpful to see if Phase 2 is built, what the improvements would all do to that intersection. The queue length, there continues to be some discussion about the length of the left turn lane into the site. We're proposing a 50-foot designated turn lane into the development. The analysis shows that somewhere is around 45 feet is required. 50 is the minimum length that DOT will approve. We've submitted that design a couple different times in the plan to DOT, and they've yet to they've yet to comment that 50 feet is not adequate. But the town's consultant is consistently asking for additional length on that. And it's our it's our opinion. So there is still this intersection has some serious existing problems associated with it as far as queue lengths backing up on Saco Street. We're providing a left turn lane from the intersection to be 50 feet beyond our entrance as part of these improvements. That will help the situation. That's just the left turn lane. There's also significant issues with the through lane, through right turn lane. And that's causing some more of the issues. It's, I guess, it's our thought that what we're proposing is to meet the requirements of what our development needs for a left turn lane. It's improving the intersection as a whole. Does it solve all the problems of the intersection? Probably not, but I don't think it's the applicant's responsibility to build beyond what their project is creating for traffic issues at the intersection as in beyond an additional adding on to that that left turn lane. So that's that's our thought on that. DOT, like I said, has not indicated that they feel additional length is required there. We can specifically ask that and get their feedback, but it's our understanding that that's only coming from the the town's consultant. This next one, which I think is, it's a problem. It's a problem for the applicant, and I think it's a problem for the sort of the project as a whole, mainly on a timing issue. There's this reverse curve issue that's created by the alignment of the left turn lane by adding the left turn lane in a room for a potential sidewalk on the western side of Saco Street. The alignment with the current intersection improvements creates a jog in the road. We 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 questioned that back in the summer when we first created this Saco Street Improvement Plan. And there was no way to eliminate that jog without a redesign of the improvements to the intersection. Essentially, the intersection needs to shift to the east some in order to take that jog out of the road. It's our understanding that the town's consultant is is meeting with town staff to, I guess, work out a scope change to their to their intersection design and put together a schedule to do that. Unfortunately, we can't update our plan until that work is done. And what I've heard from the town's consultant is that might not happen until March of this year. So we're really looking to try and if, assuming we can resolve any other issues other than this Saco Street offsite improvement plan. We're really looking to try and get some sort of a conditional approval or something, so we're not we're not held up, I guess, waiting for the town, the redesign of that intersection to occur before we can, I guess, finalize the plan for this offsite improvement work. The rest of the traffic comments were all again, neither no comment. I think a couple of them, again, relate to that off-street improvement plan as far as showing the painting for the for the Center Island and the adding a street sign. We're in agreement with those things, but that'll all be included on that final Saco Street plan once we are able to to make those changes. So I think that's it. We, and the plan is only had minor minor changes, I think, done since the last meeting, mainly notes. And I think the biggest change was adding that radius on the corner, the raised concrete to allow for the bigger delivery trucks. I'd be happy to go through any questions or get into more detail on on anything that the board has questions on.
Thank you very much, Sean. We do have an opportunity for public comment on this item. If you are here in attendance and would like to speak on this, you could use the raise my hand feature, and we will gladly call on you and give you a chance to speak. And then Sean, if you could maybe stop the share real quick. So make sure I don't miss any hands up. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and turn this over to the board for discussion. Roger, do you want to go first?
Sure. Let me get the easy one out of the way first. Sean, are you proposing to go with this the sign that has a dark background? Is that what you're?
That's that's the preference. That's, it sounds like Burr Signs. It sounds like they've done similar similar signs in Scarborough. So that that's what's preferred. If the board's against that, then I end up the preference is to have the sign where it's light during the day and dark at night. If that's not a minimal to the board, then I guess we would go with the dark all day long.
Okay, so during the day, the sign would have the light background?
Correct.
Okay. Does our ordinance have anything, Jamel? Does our ordinance have a say anything about a sign that seems to be an active, active sign, right? If it changed like that?
Roger, do you mind? Just so I can for so we better understanding, how does the background change? Is it lit? I guess, is there a lighting that's going on? Is it just? How exactly does it go from light in the daytime to dark at night? I don't. I guess I haven't seen a sign like that come through the town. Doesn't mean I guess I I haven't seen a sign like that come through the town. Doesn't mean there isn't one that our code officers dealt with, but if you could help understand what the mechanics of that.
Yeah, I don't know if if Lauren might be able to chime in on that. I think they had some more direct discussions with sign manu- or sign manufacturer this today.
Yeah, so so Sean, so I don't have, I I can get the town more details on that. My partner spoke with Burr Signs today and I didn't get any details on the internal workings, how it does that. But we certainly will get that information over to you quickly.
Because I've noticed the other Aroma Joes around the area, they do have that white, when I see it, they have the the light background. So I guess I'm gonna have to take take note of them at night and see if they're actually changed. Do they, do all the
We we haven't done a sign like this before, Rogers. That's that's a good point. My partner Marina is is if she can be upgraded to speak, she has the details. She's telling me on how the sign does this, Jamel. Marina Shula Kuskaya, she's should be a panelist. There she comes.
Wow, thanks to technology. This is probably the first time I've seen this working this way. So I spoke to Burr during the day, so the sign is white. But at nighttime, because it has a double, like a layers inside, the lights only go through through the letters and through the beams. So when you drive by, you would not see the white background. You would only see the letters. So that's how it works. I was blown away by it, but I was told that this is Scarborough's dark sky initiative. That you're looking for not to see the white background that's most of our Aroma Joes have. So hopefully that answered the question in my Russian, but I see some smiles, so I assume they did not, but that's
I could jump in too. I think what the ordinance states is that the signs should have a dark background with light lettering. But it sounds like it's not going to be a white background per se, but more such a see-through or
I I think Jamel, right? When you look at the sign, it's white. I I was also very confused today. So when you look at the sign, it's white. Then now pictured your night, it's being internally lit, but the light only goes through the letters from Aroma Joe's logo and the drive-through. That's what only visible at night because from the rest of the sign, the light doesn't come through. It has like a double wall inside. So you don't see the background. Does does it make sense, Jamel? Okay.
Those to me, that's just me, though.
Okay, well, I got one person, so that's good.
Well, who am I to question that?
But but is that what you guys were looking for?
Well, we want to make sure the sign at night is it's not a a light back, a white background at night, you know?
And and Roger, right? That's exactly what a sign designer is done. In the nighttime, you don't see the background because it double walled inside. So the light only shines through the writing. So whatever is written on the sign will be visible. But the white background is no longer visible because of the light not able to come through the vinyl that they have inside the sign. So at night, you only will see Aroma Joes and a drive-through, no background.
Marina, can we send the board some sample signs that that they've done?
Sure, and working with Burr Sign, I know he actually sent me quite a few of the signs that he've done for Scarborough. And he's well aware of the initiative that Scarborough took. He mentioned that it made his job much much harder, that's a side note. But he is well aware of the regulations and able to comply. So yes, we can.
So so Burr is saying that Scarborough has some of these signs already installed?
That's correct. He actually gave me a couple of signs that look totally normal during the day. But at night, the background is no longer shining, only the letters that's on the sign.
For what it's worth, Roger, I think part of, at least my confusion was just the the stark difference in the picture that we saw between the light and the black and thinking it was turning black, but understanding that that black just means there is no light. So I have a better, I I think it was the picture sort of threw off what was happening. So for, I think, like Jamel, I don't have a vote or saying what the board decides, but I have a much better understanding of it, that we're really not talking about a black background per se, it's just a no light coming through background.
Okay.
That's correct. I just learned that myself too, and I think Jamel got uh, you know, so confused that he even turned the video on. No, he's back.
Okay. So I'm satisfied with that. Regarding the fencing along, I think I think your reasoning regarding the fencing makes sense to me. Regarding the tree and the shed and everything, so I I I would have no problem with that. Obviously, the big issue is the queuing. And I'm not sure I fully understand it and I might wait till my colleague Jen gets her chance because I'm sure this is rated for rally, but one thing I do know is that coffee shops have tremendous queuing lines. And it is just it's just astonishing that some of the lines that the that the coffee shops have. So I'm all set right now and I look forward to I'm assuming Jen's gonna come through for me on this.
We'll test it out, Roger. Jen, you want to go next?
I don't have any questions. No, I'm just kidding. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess first off, thanks for the explanation on the sign. I, the only other question I had related to that, and perhaps you could include this maybe in any other follow-up information, is just how that how the change in lighting will be initiated. So is it on a timer or is it a photo cell or something that might come on or off? You know, we have like daylight savings or just generally kind of dark fall evenings, I don't know. So I was just curious, you know, anything that's sort of automated is just going to be one less thing than anybody else has to worry about, but I was just curious about that. Sounds like really interesting. I'm curious to see it in place, but also I'm curious where else we have those kind of signs in town. I was trying to see if I could think of any, and I don't think I can, so. That's fine. I think the the explanation for screening also makes sense to me. And so generally, yeah, that puts us at the queuing. I I am curious about whether or not as an organization, you have knowledge of any other Aroma Joe's locations that maybe have experienced access challenges due to queuing. And so that could either be queuing in the roadway that might delay people entering or exiting your site, or also queuing on your site where you know, maybe you, it's eight, I don't know what like the actual busiest time is. If you how like how drilled down you get on that, but if it's seven forty-five in the morning, you know, like, what are your, what are your longest typical queues? And if that becomes a problem either for your site operations or for off-site access, have you dealt with that in the past? And and where maybe, you know, are are there any comparisons that you might be able to draw to kind of help us figure out? If that's even something that from a business standpoint, you anticipate here?
So so I could, I can add a little bit to that, and I don't know, Sean, if you can as well. Our busiest location we have in the in the Aroma Joe system is in Saco, Maine, and that is a double drive-through location. And that that location can hold six vehicles on each side, so twelve vehicles. And but that, but that location has in two windows, one window on each side of the building, and it's an order and pickup window. So at any given point in time, you can, you're working on two orders for two customers. This design here, this new style design that we're doing and proposing here, we actually got the idea of this design from a company down in East Tennessee called Pals. It's a, it's a custom burger, cheeseburger, french fry, drive-through only location that has a car leaves drive-through every eighteen seconds. They're super, super fast. And you'll notice on this design, although Sean has written it, written in this four cars, we built this location in South Sanford the first time. This location from the order window to the pickup window is six cars, five to six cars, depending if there's a big truck or not. So now you can be working on four or five orders at the same time. So we're finding this style design addresses queuing issues by being able to have a higher throughput. We don't have intercons and we'll never have intercons in a drove in Aroma Joe, so that's how other typical QRSs deal with throughput. They put a intercom system in so they can get more orders on the screen. We've solved that by putting the order and pickup window here on both sides of the building. And and lastly, I'll say Eaton, Eaton Traffic back in two thousand fifteen or sixteen did a analysis and a study of Aroma Joes and worked with DOT just on this issue and the queuing issue. And we have, I have a letter that I could share with you where they recommended to the state on the queue length, they when they did their analysis, they said, you know, we need to have six cars queuing. And they agreed with the state of Maine DOT to increase that to eight to compensate for any increase in in business that might might come up. So the state of Maine requires us to have a minimum of eight cars queuing to accommodate our business. Our business is probably about fifty, sixty percent of Duncan, the average Aroma Joe's is what it does. And Dunkin' Donuts is required to have twelve cars queuing wherever they go in the state. I don't know if that helps. It didn't quite answer your question, Jen, but
It's helpful background. I'm not a coffee expert other than drinking it in the morning, but you know, you you know your metrics better. So for sure, that is, you know, and and I think that in this case, you're just kind of the logistics of the site are certainly challenging in some regards, but also having your driveway effectively as far away from the building as it is, kind of does provide you overflow room, for lack of a better term. So then I I, you know, I agree with the the consistent review comments about the left turn lane queuing here. And I'm just, I'm curious again. I feel like I've asked this exact question before, but now it's a different time, so maybe there's a different answer. Is there, Angela or Jay, is there any update on when the town's improvement to this intersection may occur?
I can, I can jump in if that is okay, Nick. Yeah, I I I know Sean was asking questions. He got into a little bit of the detail with the skew and talking about reverse curves and all of that kind of thing. One of the things that had come up the last time, it was in front of the planning board with those issues. And so what we had talked about with our consultant is about shifting some of our future improvements as much as we can to the east to try to help that. We've also talked to DOT about it. And while it's not ideal, it's the the current layout, they weren't, didn't seem as concerned. And so they were actually appreciative that the town was looking at doing anything we could take out of that angle. So I I don't think that's the real hiccup or issue. I think we also looked at who comes first, whether they were going to build out or us. And I think we were trying to figure out a way that it's important that it doesn't matter, I guess, essentially, that we'll be able to work with it either way. And so I think to that I think we're at that point. And I I know Sean had mentioned about trying to get to a place where they can move forward. And I I think with what we have, we're, we are there. I think we talked about just making sure there's some note on the plan or whether it's in any kind of condition that the board comes up with eventually, really around just continuing to coordinate with the town. Cause I think we're going to be, like he had said, just doing a final update to our plan set. And my goal would be, yes, the end of February, beginning of March, we're talking about putting it out to bid. So it's beyond just, you know, tweaking a design. I mean, we're, we're done at that point. And looking at construction this season. So I don't think we're that far off at all. And so I think that's an, is an easier lift. I think the other piece was really the off-site queuing length was really the concern, not necessarily the onsite queuing for this site. Just because like they had mentioned, the signals currently now during certain times queues all the way back to one of the side streets beyond this parcel. And heads, you know, towards Gorham. And so concern is really about, I guess, as you had said, knowing their own site. The hindrance of trying to get in and also take a left out is really the pattern that's going to happen there is people are coming in from the west and heading into Portland in the morning commute. And so if you already have that queue length through that area and then it's tangled up with left in out or trying to get a left out of there is going to be extremely difficult in the morning. And so the town has had conversations with DOT about it. They are aware, they were looking at it a little more closely and and seeing some concerns with that as well. So I think that will get flushed out, I think, more with the TNP process, which hasn't been finalized. As Sean had mentioned, they're still working through that piece. So I would hope that between the the town and DOT do communicate regularly. And so I think between both of our staff as well as the consultant, we could kind of come up with what that number is. So I don't know if that answers your questions, but I I think a lot of progress has been made. But we still are not in, I guess, complete agreement. And I think as the board usually waits to get their TNP in hand, I don't know is it needs to be resolved tonight.
I'll just jump in real quick and say, yeah, they need a TNP before we can really make any approvals here.
Any update, any update on when that, when you might see that TNP? Probably not.
Well, no, because the last correspondence that we received from DOT, I think there was like three relatively minor points, one being the radius at the entrance, which we addressed. I think there was something with some of the calculations. And then the third one being the updated plan to they had mentioned working with the town on a, on on the revised intersection and updating the plan to take that jog out of the road. And that one seems to be the thing that I haven't heard more from DOT that says like Angela mentioned, that that they're sort of good with the jog and we could proceed without it. The last correspondence we had was to work with the town to address that. So that's why I was saying, we can't really address the TNP until we get a new design of the intersection. But I can reach out to DOT and and if they're good with potentially approving something with the jog in it, knowing that we may revise it at a later date, then that could presumably move forward a lot quicker.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, and so, okay, that makes sense. They're just waiting, it's kind of a stuck, you're you're stuck in a holding pattern there. And so you're what you are saying is that it's your proposal to only have you're not proposing to add the additional seventy-five feet of length to the left turn lane? Is that correct?
That's correct. We're, we're showing that our site requires a fifty-foot turn lane, or less than fifty feet. We're proposing fifty feet, because that's the minimum that DOT allows. The turn lanes being extended all the way from Saco Street to fifty feet beyond as part of our improvements on Saco Street. There's probably additional improvements to the intersection that could be made if that lane was even extended further, but at what point is, I guess, But at what point is, I guess, it's the applicant's responsibility to address traffic that we're generating and, and creating, not necessarily fix an intersection that has some serious problems now more than, more than we need to.
Yeah. So is there any type of, I think you, it was mentioned a little bit in the memo from one side or the other. But any appetite either by the town staff or not by town staff, but on behalf of the town or on behalf of the applicant to monitor whether or not that length is sufficient? And if it's not sufficient, what are the options after that point? And I'm, I'm asking that because the plan that you're showing doesn't, you know, this, I'm, I'm familiar with this area, but not perhaps on this level of detail. And there isn't a lot shown in the way of, of what extends to the north of here. And so I'm just curious what other impact that might create.
Is that a question for me, Jen, or is it a question for Angela?
Well, I guess I can, okay.
I was just going to speak to sort of the, the notion of, of sort of doing an analysis after the establishment is in and occupied and built. Really essentially, it's the board's job to ensure that an application meets the standards going in. It's, the town doesn't really have the mechanism that once we provide this typical occupancy and the construction's done to have someone come back out and do additional work in the street. So it's really, and so I think as Angela talked about, I think, you know, town staff, you know, we're really, I think, as part of the interested in, in what shakes out as part of the TNP process to help really facilitate the answer to the, the length of the left turn lane. I think, and Angela could probably speak more knowledgeably about it. But some of the concern has to do with sort of the, the conditions in the area and the queue, you know, the, the stacking that occurs along in the public road. I'm not talking about the stacking onsite and associated with it, but the, just the existing and being sure there's really adequate space to get, get folks there. So Angela, I don't know if you want to have anything to add to that.
Yeah, and I know, I know Sean's point is saying that obviously this intersection has issues and there is queuing, as I mentioned already, at the intersection itself. And, and while I agree the applicant shouldn't be fixing all of the pestens, the, the problem, and this is something that DOT and our conversations with them about this site was really also targeting a little bit was, is really those getting out of the site. And so what that does to the main roadway as, as well, Jen, and I'm sure you probably have seen this more and kind of probably could speak to it maybe more fluidly. But the concern really being is you're, you're then backing up traffic to let people out. And there's concern with safety issues and, and all kinds of other things. Because really the pattern is left in, left out. That's going to be the main kind of flow of traffic. And so that's where the concern comes in about that queue length. And I understand, you know, like Sean had said, they provided calculations showing this is a typical, everything's working smoothly. It might be fifty feet, fine, but there's other factors that could play into this and just in the alignment of where that driveway sits in, in the middle of obviously an already concerned.
Sure. It, it reminds me of the, one of the gas station driveways onto Black Point Road just below the Oak Hill intersection where you have long queues out of that signal. And we've all seen, you know, all sorts of people doing different things, both coming off the site, but also the, the main line through traffic and left turn lanes being impacted that way and, and through lanes on the other direction as well. So yeah, I, you know, yes, this fixing this whole problem, I agree shouldn't fall on the shoulders of a coffee shop either. But I also believe that your, you know, that, that this business stands to benefit from as smooth and safe an access as we can all put here. So, you know, I, I just.
Yeah, Jen, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with the site. Probably Sean and Lauren will kill me after all. What are you proposing? How, how long?
The recommendation was for an additional seventy-five feet beyond what you're proposing. And so the question that I asked earlier about timing and, you know, monitoring and perhaps mitigation after the fact, you know, I, I understand that obviously the time, if you're out here doing full roadway paving, that is the time to make that type of improvement. You definitely, nobody wants to come back after the fact to extend particularly for seventy-five feet. That's really not actually a long, a lot of roadwork in terms of what the, the scope of the other changes are here. So obviously it would be of the most benefit to everyone to get the length of that left turn lane right the first time. But I, so I was just curious what, you know, I, I'm just, you know, looking at this from the information that's presented and just trying to figure out, balance that between the numbers and the data that you've submitted, but also the activity that you'll be adding onto the site and just trying to figure out, you know, we're all just trying to forecast the, the future here. I mean, hopefully you have a successful site, which does generate a lot of traffic. And so I think we're all as a board, you know, just trying to make sure that that works for you, but also works for the general traveling public and the safety for this roadway.
So Jen, have you ever worked with the businesses when, if we're willing to put fifty, you help with the cost of additional seventy-five so we can, from the first time, complete it the way it is? That's what you're asking? That type of project? Looks like Angela is in charge of that. I'm not sure who's in charge of that, but it looks like she is.
That's going to be outside of my, outside of my realm. But yeah, I, I, I'm just curious. And part of that, it has to do with, you know, what, what exists, what actually would a seventy, what would another seventy-five feet on this left turn lane look like? That, that it's a little unclear from this plan because that's not what you're proposing. So, you know, there's, there's a merit there. But I, I was just trying to get a sense of what, what those different scenarios might look like.
No, Jen, I, I got your, 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 your point of view. But I was asking, Jen, if there, there are some funds to complete the whole lane that they wanted to do from the, the town.
I guess what I, what I would say would go back to our staff's original comment was that DOT is going to play a role in what they see is needed as well. So while our peer review and I guess staff is saying there are more complications, that fifty feet doesn't appear to be enough in our opinion. DOT is going to have it and also have an opinion. And really it's about making sure your project works on its own merits. So that wouldn't be a public infrastructure project in order to get people in and out of Aroma Joe's.
I'm just going to chime in real quick. I, I think, you know, this is helpful conversation. But at the same time, I think we really need to see the TNP before much can really be done on a, you know, a practical level here. So I don't want to get too far off into this with, you know, without more information being provided on the DOT side. So that's, I, I think everyone would be, I think it would benefit everyone in this conversation if we had that information first. Jen, do you have other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Rachel?
Yeah, well, let me deal with something easier, I, I think. And, and that is in terms of the, the sign, I'm intrigued by it. I think it, it offers some possibilities, but I do have, I, I'm basically, I'm not opposed to it. Let me say that. I do think what Jen brought up in terms of a, a timing mechanism so that, that would be on the plans and so that we could be comfortable that the sign becomes, the background becomes black at a certain time, whether it's a specific sunset or, and changes with sunrise. However, that happens, I think if that's going to, if we're going to have a sign like that, that's, that's an absolute must-have so that we know it's not a case of somebody remembering to switch it, but that it's automated. I do have, as I look at the plan and the way the headlights are going to go, does anybody know how tall that shed is?
Just going by what I was trying to see from Google Street View, it's probably at least six feet to the eve and then pitched roof. So I would say to the peak of the roof, it's probably at least eight feet tall.
So between the tree and the shed, it looks as though that the, the lights are not going to hit the house. Is that your?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that they would be shining on the house at all.
All right. And I, I, I don't think I, I don't think I need to see that fence extended. I'm fine with the stacking onsite, that's not a problem. I tend to go with the, the direction that I think both Jen and Angela are, are talking about. And that is best to solve the problem while we still have an opportunity in terms of the stacking, in terms of the, the left turn into the site. And I agree that we can't make a decision at this point until we see what DOT comes up with. In terms of the cost, that's always, that's, we, we are accustomed to hearing developers say, yes, well, that's pretty expensive. And I was saying, yes. That's always a, a discussion that is not held with the planning board. So whatever additional discussions a developer has to have or would like to have, that's between the, the town and the developer. But it's really not something that enters into the decision-making process of, of the planning board. Then I have one other thing on, see if I've got it on C 101, the proposed site plan. I note that the sidewalk that comes out of Aroma Joe really does not line up with the crosswalk. And I would suggest before that, if plan is finally done, you take a look at how that's going to, how that's going to go. Should it line up with the crosswalk? Should it be broadened so folks can come out of the, come out of that sidewalk from Aroma Joe and, and go to the right or go to the left or go straight across? I, I think a better alignment is something that's appropriate. And of course, you really can't know what that alignment is going to look like until you know what DOT says and how that is going to work, how it's going to, how that crosswalk is going to work. So that's something for you to consider as you go on to the next submission and get more information there. But there, there should be some sort of an alignment with that trail sidewalk coming out of, out of Aroma Joe. Other than that, I have no more questions. And just thank you very much to the folks from Aroma Joe. This is not an easy site. I appreciate the willingness to work with this. And when you have the third party here, the sitting in the background, which is named DOT, it is, it is always a lot of delicate negotiations. I hope this site can work. I hope to see Aroma Joe's there if, like possible, I, that it will be, I hope. It will bring something to the town, but there are still some issues that have to be worked through based upon DOT. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Rick Duperry?
Hey, Nick, I'm so sorry. I tried to recuse myself earlier because I'm a directed butter, but my mute didn't come off fast enough. So maybe Rick Miking, I'll yield my time to Rick Miking, who would be the, the voting member, I believe, on this one.
Thanks, Rick. Appreciate it. Rick Miking?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, this has been a tough corner to, to, no pun intended, navigate around. And, and I do think that the, the PPM is a critical piece here in order to move forward. So with that not being available tonight, I mean, I think everything is here. The only point I maybe just want to throw out there is, is in regard to that shed, is there something that can be worked out with the butter? So that down the road, this doesn't become a problem of who's going to take care of what? If that ever was to change hands or there was some issue with the coffee shop, if it was sold and changed or something of that nature, what does this cause in terms of a problem? And I'm not saying there's a solution to it. Handshake, I don't know what we do these days. But if I had a piece of property or I had a structure that was on my property and I'm going in and doing a major job there, I'd want to make sure all the pieces were put in place. So that's just, just a red flag I'm throwing out there. Aroma Joe's, it's your, your can of worms, so to speak, to, to deal with the butters. But it could be a thorn in your side later down the road if we don't take care of it now. And I don't know what now looks like. But I, I think, I think everybody's done their, their part here. I'm, I'm certainly, I like the sign. I think, you know, if, if you want to kind of get a relationship to what that sign's going to do, put your phone on GPS and go from daylight to nighttime and see what your phone does in the background. It kind of changes so that you now are able to see different characters on your screen versus what you would see if there was sunlight on it. That's kind of how this sign operates. And I think it can be done with a photo optic optics. But I'm not, I'm not an expert on these kind of signs. So I would definitely think that you might want to connect with the sign manufacturers and see if, just putting in a photo cell so that it, obviously it's an LED sign. So the varying changes of lumens is going to be fairly easy to do with the technology. But that's kind of like what the sign's supposed to do. It changes based on, on the, the, the light, the ambient light that is out there. It's pretty slick. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Rick. So I, I just want to recap a couple of the items that I think were outstanding. And I, and Sean, you might be able to go through this with me. We're, one of the, one of the asks from staff was, and part of our ordinances, of course, is the sidewalk. And I think at one of the previous meetings, we had discussed a multimodal reserve account contribution. And from the written materials, it didn't sound like you were, you were willing to, you wanted us to reconsider that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that was in the previous, in the previous response, we suggested that or wanted, wanted the board to consider if that was based on the improvements that we're already making to the intersection and the lack of foot traffic to our business that we're proposing. If that was something.
Yeah, I think that's worthy of the board weighing in on at this, this stage. So can, can we all just quickly give our thoughts on whether or not we need to see that multimodal? And, and just for clarification purposes, either Jay, Jamel, or Angela, at, at this zoning, are they supposed to have one or two sidewalks in this area?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jamel.
It's typical to require sidewalks along both public street frontages for developments such as this.
Okay, so that would be both County Road and Saco Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And the ask from the board last time around was for a, a contribution for one, is that correct? One on the Saco Street side, okay. All right, board, do we want to quickly just go over it since the applicant has asked us to look at that request again? Rachel?
Yeah, a contribution for the Saco side, I think that, that would do it.
Roger?
I'm not sure I understand what the issue is here. When I'm reading staff's comments, it says here, the applicant, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. The applicant shall provide funds equal to, okay. So the applicant is basically asking for a waiver? Is that, is that what's going on here?
Yes. Yes.
I guess I, I guess I'm inclined to say that we could get some, uh, some funds in lieu of actually having a constructed sidewalk.
Jennifer?
Um, yeah, I think it would be important to make that contribution or the Saco Street, for the Saco Street frontage, or contribute to that. Um, either contribute to the fund or construct the sidewalk.
Thanks, Jennifer. Rick Miking.
I agree. I think, uh, contribution to the, to the fund is, is important, uh, given the the amount of work that's gonna go on to this, um, corner here and the fact that, uh, the business will, will benefit from it as well. So I, I, I think, I, I think they should contribute to, uh, the sidewalk for the Saco Street.
Thank you. So I think you have your answer there.
By the way, that's just, that's just Saco Street, right?
That, just the Saco Street is what I've heard as collective, according to this.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, and then I have one other note here. Uh, final elevation, um, was noted that it was not included and there was talk about, uh, uh, you know, maybe a fake window or facade area. Um, does the board wanna see in the next submission, the, uh, final elevation of the building? I'll, I'll take head nods on this one, or yes? Okay.
How, how critical, I mean, is that, is that a big deal? How critical is that?
Uh, Nick, can I just, so the only, the only question was, we eliminated an open sign that was on the side of the building near the, uh, the walk-up window area. So that open sign was shown on the building elevations, that, that's gone now, so. I think we addressed any need for false windows and facade changes. At the last meeting, everybody was good with that. It was just this open sign question.
We should probably have the final elevation, though, as part of the last submission that we approve, I, I assume.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Okay, and then, um, I think we got enough info on the sign, so I think that, that looks okay. And then, um, with the shed and the, and the shading of that, um, I think more to Rick Miking's point, it's, it's, doesn't seem to be a huge issue at this point, but if, um, seeing as part of that is on your property, even though it shouldn't be, um, if that shed ever went away, do we have an issue now with headlights pointing into, um, you know, somebody's house? So, um, I, I'm, you know, personally, the way I look at it is, I'm okay with the way it is now, but I think as a, you know, maybe, and I, I know this probably wouldn't be part of a condition, but as a, you know, a good business partner out there, if it ever did, that shed did come down, you know, either, um, hopefully the owner of the budding property would, would take some action, or, or you would as the applicant to, uh, help shield that property from any headlights. So, uh, those, that was just my thought on that. Um, outside of that, I think, uh, the board, um, probably would reiterate that we're excited to see the TMP. We're also excited to see this project move forward, so, um, you know, keep your head up, keep chugging along, and, uh, I'm confident that we'll, we'll be able to get you to the finish line, so.
Good news is the price of coffee is going up.
So, uh, let's, uh, quickly end it with, uh, staff, if there was anything, um, that you needed this board to cover, uh, before we headed into this. Um, and likewise, I'll ask the applicant afterwards. Angela?
Um, one last thing that Sean brought up that wasn't mentioned by Board, I just wanna give him clarification on. So when he does resubmit, was Woodard and Kern's comment, um, in our comment about the stormwater infiltration system and the liner associated with that. One of the things you talked about was that you're having a note that said all of the aquifer protection standards were being met. Part of that standard is that you meet chapter 500. This site doesn't on its own trigger chapter 500, that's in that standard. And so really all looking for is for you to come back and really address Woodard and Kern's comments by having yourself or a PE be able to provide that, um, in writing, saying that you're not doing any, um, detrimental um, impacts to the aquifer, um, based on your design. Um, because typically with D, uh, DEP, when they're doing and following chapter 500, they may be lining that. So that's all I'm, I think we're looking for. I think it's an easier lift than maybe you're making, um, thinking it is. That's why I wanted to give you some clarification, Sean, on that.
Yeah, I guess I, I just wasn't sure what exactly they wanted to see, but when you, when you say the meet, need to meet chapter 500, I, I believe the ordinance has two, two different standards that we have the option of meeting, um, which I put in that memo. One is that we comply with chapter 500. Or the second being that we treat um, 90% of the impervious area and a certain amount of the pervious area with low-impact development uh, techniques as specified in chapter 10 of the DNP, uh, DEP
Okay.
Design Guide. So, we're actually meeting the second one, which doesn't refer to chapter 500, uh, at all. Um, so I, I mean, I was, I was thinking by us meeting the ordinance, that covers us for not impacting the, the aquifer for meeting these standards in the ordinance, but, so I wasn't sure what more they wanted us to, how, how we needed to address that.
So I think, um, it'll be important, you had mentioned about, um, part of your analysis and looking at bedrock and groundwater and all of that, if you could put that in, some of that detail. Um, and also just to give a heads up for this site, as you move into a, in future phases, it will trigger DEP to look at this, and so they might be revisiting that. Um, and just so that's why it's probably good for the applicant as well to have something from a PE saying we're good and there's no detrimental harm associated with that aquifer protection. I think it also get, would give the applicant a little bit of insurance, um, as well as you move forward with this future phases. I think it'll help everyone in the long run just to put that in a document of some sort.
Okay, uh, Lauren?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, um, this is a question, um, I was hoping that you could ask your board to do an unofficial vote, um, on the project, uh, support or not. One of the issues that I didn't mention in the beginning that I'm dealing with is that Partners Bank holds, holds a mortgage on this, um, property. And when Tanya passed away, that put the, put the mortgage into default. And I've been able to hold off the, the bank and, and told them that it's going through probate state. And I've been able to hold them off, but I, I'm really concerned about timing if this drags on another two, three, four months. So I was hoping that if I could at least get an unofficial vote, I could take that to the bank and tell them, okay, we got just a couple of things left. The, the board has unofficially, you know, expressed they support it, and, um, that just gives me something to take to the bank, that's all.
I think what we could do, uh, yeah, you know, I don't know what kind of a, a unofficial vote we could really take. Um, but what I think we could do is ask, uh, Doreen if the minutes can reflect, um, the bo- the board's positive outlook on this project, uh, within the community, you know, given the assumptions that you have, you know, met the criteria through, uh, you know, all of the ordinances, that we, we see this as a, a positive project for the town of Scarborough and something that could, could be advanced as long as we're, we're meeting all of the standards. Does that seem like a fair statement, um, and just for the rest of the board, uh, make sure I don't wanna misspeak for anyone, but is that, is that a reasonable statement that we can have reflected in the minutes? Okay, is that, is that, do you think that would help some?
Oh, that absolutely would help, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Doreen, if you could just make a, a note to that effect, that would be great. Thank you. Alright, uh, anything else from staff or applicant that we should clear up before we let you go?
I, I guess I'd just like to, it, it sounds to me like the sort of the biggest outstanding issue are the off-site improvements, the Saco Street. Um, I didn't hear anything that, I know there's a few, I guess, things that will resubmit regarding to onsite stuff, but I get the sense that that's really just to kind of clean things up, um, for a final plan. I just wanna make, make, make sure I'm not missing anything here, and it's really just trying to sort out the, the Saco Street widening plan.
I, I think from where, you know, from what I've heard from this board and, uh, and reading all the comments, I would assume that uh, internally on, onsite, you're in pretty good shape, you know, just dot some i's, cross some t's type of stuff.
Okay.
Roger?
Yeah, can I, a question to Angela. Is there a holdup with DEP? I mean, not DP, um, main dot, I guess is what it is regarding. Is, is it, is there a holdup like we're, we're seeing at the, at the Downs situation because of, um, manpower and stuff like that?
Um, well, I know, like I said, DOT was the one who reached out to town staff because they were picking it back up. Um, so I know they have at least looked at it and had conversations with us, um, probably last month, maybe. Um, so I think they're just in the queue. It's just where it is in the queue, I'm sure.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, lengthy because of, uh, lack of manpower up there and and DOT.
Well, no, they have, um, they have a set timeline, so once an applicant missed and it's deemed complete, they're under a clock, so that doesn't change, so.
Okay, okay.
My understanding, so.
I just didn't want.
I think there was a pause about getting more information, maybe from the designers, and so there was some back and forth, and so then it was obviously paused for some time, um, and now it's getting just picked back up, so.
Okay.
Alright. That's it. I want, wish you good luck. We'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on tonight's agenda is item number eight, AMR Real Estate Holdings LLC requests a preliminary site plan amendment review as part of a proposed contract zone amendment for 137 US Route 1, a separate assessor's map, U 47 Lot 94. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so this is located within an existing contract zone, uh, the existing Mercedes-Benz uh, dealership along Route 1. The applicant's before you this evening for a preliminary site plan amendment review for a 500 square foot addition uh, to the existing building on the property. Um, as the board may recall, the Town Council and Planning Board, uh, held the joint workshop on the project in early, uh, September 2020. So after tonight's preliminary review, the applicant will need to go back before, uh, the Town Council for review and approval of the proposed amended contract zone agreement. You know, subsequent to that step, uh, the applicant will be back before the board for a final review of the proposal. So a multi-step process. The staff would like to know that the applicant did remove the, uh, bleed wall as depicted on past submissions to the board, uh, as recommended by staff. And the applicant should prepare to discuss the, uh, proposed building design uh, in the plans today and any other modifications on the site, um, as well. The applicant is requesting a waiver, um, from the requirement to provide a pre and post-development conditions and stormwater plan for water quality treatment. Uh, and staff has recommended that the applicant, uh, provide details of the roof drain connections for the proposed building addition to help clarify uh, the direction of any runoff that may occur. And staff has provided the board, uh, with a draft motion for preliminary approval this evening, uh, for your consideration. Turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. Uh, for the applicant, uh, Mr. Richards or Mr. Ducat?
Yep, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, can I share the screen, please?
Absolutely.
Should have the ability, Dave. Do you see the?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Okay.
Wait, but, alright, let's see. Tell me if you can see this, please. Are you seeing that?
We can see your screen.
Can you see the, the plan?
Yeah, it's just small.
Let me make it big, please. So, this is the existing site plan. Uh, the area that we're working in is relatively small. We're going to be putting in addition, uh, as shown in purple here, this area that I'm circling right now is actually under an existing roof. So the actual amount of, uh, additional roof will be, uh, 230 square feet. Um, I shift back up a little bit. We were before you and tabled, and that was due to Mercedes-Benz, uh, changing their branding from what they call Auto House 2, which we were in the process of becoming compliant. And now they are doing what they call Auto House 3. Auto House 3 is mostly about client contact, uh, so it happens mostly inside the building, but they are asking for some, uh, changes to the exterior of the building, which we will, uh, identify as we go forward. So, and part of that is the glazing, uh, that you see here. Um, and again, I'll show you that in plan. We're also going to remove two of the four entrances, so this would be straight glass across here, and then there'll be an entry here and here. The walks with the blade wall gone are no longer interrupted and they circumscribe, uh, you know, the building uh, without, uh, having clients, uh, be forced to walk, uh, in cer- in traffic. We intend to maintain the drip edge, uh, and then continue it along the new building, and then this would be the planting area. And that's just kind of a quick overview of the scope of the work. So, back in, uh, I believe it was 2016, we were approved for 26,900 square feet. Um, we hadn't used all of that, which is represented by this yellow area. Uh, so we're actually asking for an increase of 350 square feet that's on the ground. Uh, and again, as I told you, the roof increases only 230 square feet. We'll go on. Majority of the changes for the dealership, dealer fund experience, they're creating an internal walkway. The idea is to have the cars on display and sales, um, to create more opportunities for their client to you know, conduct the sales process, whether it would be inside a closed space, uh, out uh, at a desk or just free standings. So the idea is a client comes in and that new possession, and then they can be directed to whoever they need to, uh, to see while they're there. So a lot of internal changes, but not a lot of external changes. Quick look at the elevations, and we'll go into these in more detail, uh, with the renderings. But generally speaking, uh, if you want the remnants of the blade walls, you know, what they call a monument wall with a Mercedes star, um, we're going to take out the, uh, corner, um, split face block, you know, give it a little bit more of a modern, more open book, uh, split face block, as you can see, this kind of a lot of this appropriate for time, it's a little bit heavy. So it's going to be some renderings, so. All right, is everything large enough for you to see?
Yes.
So this is a sketch rendering, looking up Route 1 to the north, uh, insisting workshop, the issue we did a little while ago. Uh, and then the proposed changes to the building where, uh, the monument would be, uh, black ACM with a silver star on it. We're looking to paint the roof black to kind of put cap on this, it's, uh, and then let's, we'll, this is kind of looking in towards the west from the street. And going too fast, please, um, um, looking south from actually inside, you know, property. And then kind of an over view, uh, area, so you can see, you know, the our work is really in this corner here, other than that we're changing the glazing. We're not increasing uh, square footage or anything in this area. We're going to, you know, work within the confines of the existing foundation. And then this is a kind of a broad shot from out in the street, of what we're proposing. The, uh, materials of construction, uh, the, um, the existing metal siding, obviously in this area, we're not proposing new work. It's actually in this area from where my cursor is over. Um, so we would continue with the, uh, EFS or synthetic stucco above. But, um, you know, put in all the new glass, I'm gonna go back. So the the materials of construction are going to be metal, metal soffit material, same color as the ethos with the black roof. As I discussed, the ethos or synthetic stucco, the new curtain wall system and the black ACM at the monument. Those are actually all materials. It's pretty limited power. They're proposing new signs on the building as such. I'll get into that in a moment. Actually, I can do that now. So back in 2019 or 16, excuse me, this sign was permitted, but never was directed. We'd like to deem that as part of this construction. It's a, we're building a stone wall base, very similar to the stone wall base at the north side of the site. As when the first thing in the Scarborough. It would be a raised silver star Mercedes logo and then the type of product there between. Within this, we're asking for permission to paint. We're not changing, we're just painting the existing roof. The same thing with the pylon, nothing would change with these other than the color connection. And the color schemes. And here's a little bit of definition on what we're proposing to do with the signs. It's a, these pieces and parts, if you will, come as part of a package that Mercedes Benz provides to one of their vendors. And you can choose various different sizes. We chose this, this size is, is our opinion, not too large and not too small, kind of. It looked right, the lack of better terms. So we have a one foot five high dealer sign. The AMG sign, which is a brand they sell, would be one foot five. And the Mercedes here is one foot five, except the end will be a color. We do not have on green color. These would be surface mounted and turned with white, you know, Lexi plastic. Lights. So at night, they would glow during the daytime, as you can see, they're kind of hard to pick up in the end. And then it's a little bit of description of the plantings. Again, the area that we discussed, who the plantings in. And then the few plants which would be interspersed, the location would be selected and the installation would be directed by our latest state architect, Sasha Newsman. That was the stuff. And then here's, here's the proposed account for those areas. And that's about it. I can have the signage permit here and what we did with the walks as part of our response to staff comments. But I think I kind of picked those up in the description of the project. If you have any questions, please show them.
Great. Thank you very much. We do have an opportunity for public comment on this item. If there's anyone here from the audience that would like to speak, please use the raise my hand feature. Seeing that, I'll turn it over to the board. Rachel.
Yeah, first of all, I would like to thank the applicant for the workshop that that happened. It was very helpful in explaining a lot of, a lot of things to us and allowing us the opportunity to really reflect on what you want to do. I actually have very few questions other than to ask you. The, the staff had some remaining elements. And I will say that I had some difficulty with the last presentation because there was some background noise. But the staff recommendations had some observations about the applicant modifying the plans to ensure the walkway remains. The landscaping and buffering and on the, never mind the blade worn, wall is gone and that's been taken care of. Does the applicant have any problems with those staff recommendations?
No, not at all. Isn't, I believe we did just address them in our presentation. But there will be a walkway around the building internal to the drive.
Yeah, as I said, I had a little difficulty. There was some background noise, so I couldn't always catch everything you said. So I wanted to clarify that there were no, no issues with any of the recommendations that the staff had made. And you're saying you're on them, correct?
No, no, there are not.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Rachel. Roger.
I don't have any questions really myself. I just think the new design looks really nice. I like the black accents. I like the roof and everything. I think it looks nice and smooth and clean. So I'm looking forward to seeing it. I think it's going to be really attractive. So. And, and on the waiver, the request for the waiver.
I shouldn't, I, I beg your pardon. May I just comment for a moment? Because I should have given some information that I did not. The existing roof, the way it slopes, will be adding that 230 square feet that will literally be squaring off that roof. And the way it slopes right now, it will go through an existing drain, which we believe will easily have capacity for that. And then that drain goes into an existing line that goes into a 12 inch sanitary drain that empties into the street system.
Okay, so I guess as long as you provide clarification on that, on the roof drain, I have no problem with the waiver either. So I'm all set.
Thanks, Roger. Jennifer.
I don't have any other questions other than, did you say that you were adding an additional sign at the northern end of the property? Is that what I understood?
At the southern end. So that's, that, that sign was included as and allowed for via the last contract zone amendment, which was in 2016. It just was never installed. It's a very long site.
Um. Okay. But that's, oh, actually, is that shown? It's at the very, very southern corner of your property. Is that right?
It is.
I think I see like the little line, but I don't, I don't know that it was labeled. I, for some reason, I thought you said northern end, and that had me looking in a completely different area. Anyway, okay. Um, other than that clarification, I don't, I don't have any questions beyond what others have already asked.
Thanks, Jennifer. Rick DuPerry.
I will say that I liked the plan set. I like how you showed the, did a good job of showing the existing and then what the new structure was going to look like. So did want to comment on that because I thought this is an excellent plan set. I like the, I have one question. Is that, is this building similar to other buildings that have already been built in other areas of the country for Mercedes?
Yes, very, very much so, except for the slope roof. They, they have a thing for flat roofs and we know the town doesn't. And they have three discussion accepted that we keep the slope roof. Otherwise, it's very similar.
Okay. Yeah, I think it looks very nice, as Roger pointed out. I, it kind of looks like the roof is suspended in midair. That's kind of why I was wondering structurally how they do that. But I'm sure. I like that dealership a lot. So I'm sure someday I'll go in there and look at it when it's all done. Other than that, I don't have any questions. I think you did a really good job.
Thanks, Rick. Rick Manking.
Yeah, the only question I have is, have you recalculated the heat load, cooling load based on the fact that you're now creating a black roof on a what is right now, a, you know, a white roof essentially, which is, which A, tends to hold the snow. But in the summertime, it is not as much of a heat island as it will be the summer when you now have a black roof. So I'm just wondering, what's that going to do to your HVAC system?
Yep.
I do have a fix for that. If you want to just throw on, still kind of get a black roof. But you also get some solar PV, which would, you know, offset your, your carbon footprint. Just throwing it out there.
Well, that, that may be something we look at. We would probably look at a low SRI paint for that. We just have to make sure that it works properly with the, that's a Kainar finish and they can be touchy to repaint. But we have done, started the research on sourcing the material for that.
But that's great to know. I just, I just want you to be aware that it does affect your heat load and your cooling with, with the change of colors.
Agreed.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Rick. I think, I think the board pretty well covered it. Jamel, you have a draft motion for us? All right. And just checking with the applicant to understand that board review comments or staff review comments contain information regarding the stormwater features that staff has wanted more information on. So with that, I'll move to grant preliminary provisional site plan amendment approval for the project titled Prime Mercedes Benz, prepared by Garren Turgen dated 12/21/20 with the following condition. One, prior to submission of the final site plan amendment application, the plan set shall be revised to address the staff review comments and memorandum dated 1/11/21. And that's discussed with the planning board. That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion amongst the board? All right. Now call the roll. Rachel Hendrickson.
Yeah.
Roger Beely.
Yes.
Rick Manking. Oh, I'm sorry. Rick DuPerry.
Yeah.
And Jennifer Lynn.
Yeah.
Nick McGee. Yes, sure. Those unanimous. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on tonight's agenda is Crossroads Holdings LLC requests a subdivision amendment review for the Town Center Residential subdivision within the Downs Assessor's Map R52 Lot Four. Jamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As for this project, the applicant's proposing to create a total of seven new lots within the existing Town Center Residential subdivision. The lots are intended to include a mix of single-family duplex and multifamily uses with associated utilities, parking, pedestrian ways, landscaping. The proposal also includes the extension of Front Runner Way and Pacer Way. So as noted in the staff review comments, the zoning standards for the CPD district do require a coordinated interconnected street system. To this end, staff has recommended that the applicant connect Front Runner Way and Hackamore Avenue as part of this proposal. It is staff's understanding that the approved area of disturbance and boundary is approved by the main DEP can be modified through a, through an amendment process. Staff would also like to note that the Fire and Public Works Departments have provided memos suggesting this important street connection as well. So the applicant should be sure to discuss these recommendations with the board. Staff has also recommended that the applicant provide some benches, seating areas, or other place making elements along the proposed sidewalk throughout the proposed development. And finally, the zoning standards require street trees to be planted along both sides of the streets. There do appear to be areas along Front Runner Way and Pacer Way that do not have street trees. And staff has recommended that future plans include additional street trees where appropriate. Let's turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jamel. Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Jamel, for the introduction. I'm going to share my screen here. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And Happy New Year. Dan Bacon here on behalf of Crossroads Holdings. Drew Gagnon is also with me on the screen. And I put together a quick PowerPoint presentation to kind of walk through the proposal. I'm gonna make sure I can, sorry. Okay. Thanks for bearing with me. So just to orient the board to where in the project this is proposed. This is outlined in this black dash line and sort of pink area. This is the, the approved master plan. The planning board approved for the Town Center Residential part of the project. I know you're quite familiar with the project overall, but it's south of the Grandstand area. And, and starts to get very close to this outer track area that you can see on the plan. Then, of course, north of the first phase of the project. And to kind of zoom in a bit further. This is, this graphic shows the Town Center Residential Phase One. And you see the Downs Road here. And Front Runner Way here and Pacer Way right in this location. So this graphic shows the, the different phases or different types of housing that's well underway out there with Town Center Residential Phase One. And this is a subdivision amendment to, to make a pretty minor expansion north and eastward within that overall master plan. So the area outlined in orange is about 3.6 acres, so not a lot of land. And, and really an extension to the extent that we can accomplish it in this residential phase while staying within our DEP approval and, and staying outside of that outer track that for quite a while we've had to avoid. Kind of zoom in a little bit further. This shows generally the, the proposed amendment. So the proposal would be to extend. So right now, if you can see these white dash lines, Front Runner Way ends here. The proposal would be to extend Front Runner Way up about another 300, 325 feet just to the edge of the outer track that's shown on this graphic. And that's also, as Jamel indicated, the, the limits of our current DEP approvals. We're in the process of this week or next to formally submitting our DEP amendment in order to develop outside of these limits and to develop into that outer track. And I'll touch on the, the connection we want to make in a minute. But this proposal will extend Front Runner Way up and create this Lot 27. Lot 27 is planned to be for townhouse development. Really, the only reason that's not part of your package this evening is we first need to propose the subdivision amendment to create the lots before we kind of proceed with site plan. So at your next meeting, we'll review in more detail the, the townhouse plan. But townhouses are proposed in this location. They would have an access point here and also an access point, if you can see this off of Pacer Way, to provide access to this Lot 27. And so in addition to that, there would be four new cottage lots created off that Pacer Way extension. And access from vehicular access would be from Futurity Lane. These lots are designed really to be very similar to the cottages on the Green that you reviewed are now under construction in the last phase where these cottage homes would be accessed off the lane. But they would front this common area, much like the Green in the other phase. So we've laid it out that these lots all address the common. The townhouses that I was mentioning before would have a view across to the, to the Wetland Park and Front Runner Park and that open space. There would be a common also created here across Pacer Way from this common, where there could be some housing that engages with, with that green space. And then two other, two other lots intended for two family housing would be right across the street from that common. And there would be much like the, the last phase, some on-street parking that would supplement off-street parking with garages shown both on Front Runner, but also on Pacer. And street trees and all the local And street trees in all the locations that, that based on these layouts make sense. We are constrained in a few locations due to on-street parking to not, if you can see here on Pacer, just given the width of the right-of-way, um, there isn't room for street trees in the right-of-way. But we'll certainly, um, provide some landscaping, uh, on these lots and near the common to, to provide, to kind of meet the landscaping expectations. And I think also, uh, in every other location, we try to provide landscape, or excuse me, street trees where they fit within the esplanade or just off of, uh, the sidewalk. I think in addition to that, um, this area is, is pretty simple from a stormwater standpoint because the gravel wetland was over, overdesigned or, or sized, I should say, to take all of this area in addition to the development that's already occurred, uh, to drain to the gravel wetland. So in part, the limits of this phase are, are driven by stormwater and the drainage to go to that with feature that's already under construction. And, um, in addition, you know, utilities are planned within the street right-of-ways, uh, that you see here. So that's really a sense for this, you know, fairly, uh, limited extension of, of the Town Center Residential Subdivision to add some additional development within our approved limits by DEP. I think, um, you know, all the staff comments, um, were pleased to address, uh, I'd say the more minor staff comments and peer review comments. I think the biggest kind of thing to discuss at this point is the, the phasing of this as it relates to DEP. So I've put together this graphic to help, um, kind of explain how we see phasing infrastructure, uh, to meet the, the town's goals and our goals for interconnected street grid. And we're really kind of, kind of caught by our larger DEP approval, um, and a timing issue. So this yellow dash line shows our current limits today of what's approved, what's under construction. And so what we're seeking to do is to get this approval, um, you know, within the month of February, be in position to enable some construction while the DEP application is pending. And to proceed with constructing Hackamore, um, which you can see right here, Hackamore right now ends in this location. Our goal would be to get our DEP permit over the course of the spring. We're on track for a June approval. And then be in position to build, um, to build that connection over to create that linkage to Front Runner. So we did see, uh, the Fire Department's comments on multiple forms of access. Uh, we think we can kind of achieve that in the, the next few months or the immediate term onsite. We have obviously access down Front Runner Way. We would extend that to create frontage for Lot 27. We also have the access through Futurity Lane, um, for emergency response. And with a townhouse site that you would see at your next meeting, we would create access in the alley, um, parallel with Front Runner, similar to the alley system we have for the single-family home. So that would be extended to do the same type of access or multiple access that Front Runner has. So hopefully that could, could meet their needs in the immediate term, um, during the construction period. And over the course of the spring and then into the summer, when we can start construction on Hackamore, we can loop Hackamore and connect it to Front Runner. So long, long before, you know, street acceptance by Public Works, um, so that we could kind of meet that, meet that goal and have that interconnection, but enable some construction to start this spring. So I've provided some notes here on right out of the gate, we can create the alley for the townhouse. And then secondarily, we can create, um, that street connection, um, after DEP review. And so that gives you sort of a sense of what we're hoping to achieve scheduling-wise. And I think by the end of construction, um, a year from now or late, late fall, um, early winter of, of this year, um, all this infrastructure could be in and completed. And I think meet the goals of, of what everybody wants in terms of, of access of emergency and, and public service. So I think with, with that introduction, um, I have some other slides if you have more detailed kind of engineering questions or landscaping questions, but I think I'll stop there, um, and turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for, for planning board questions, discussion, um, at this point.
Thanks, Dan. We do have an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak, please use the raise my hand feature. All right, seeing none, I'm going to turn this over to the board. Uh, Jen, you want to start this one?
Sure. Um, first off, I was wondering if, can you just go back a slide? The one where you show the full road connection? Yeah. Okay, so it's that, so in the timeline that you provided, when you talk, when you're talking about roughly, yep, um, Hackamore Extension Construction to start July, do you mean connecting that through to Front Runner Way in July or, uh, just the extension beyond what's there now? Because I think what you said was, well, I'm not sure. That's why I'm asking.
I meant to say, um, in July, we'd be in position, we'd have the approvals in place to make the linkage that Public Works has brought up, um, and therefore, so right now, Jen, we're stopping here with construction. Um, it's underway because that's the limits of our current approval. We would extend down, um, to create the block and then connect to the end of Front Runner. If my, is my cursor visible to everybody? Okay. To connect to the end of Front Runner so that this loop, if you will, or block would, could be constructed, um, the second half of this year. So that there's that full, um, interconnected street. The only reason we're not doing it is that we don't have, we had to avoid the track area because of the lease that's been in place. And it's no longer in place, given the, the harness racing's, um, not in operation in our DEP approval. The historic aspects of our DEP approval, pre-approval, we couldn't get with our last application. So that's why we're now able to proceed with that.
And so at that time, do you anticipate that, um, like, would you move forward with that roadway construction even if that's all that you're doing? Or do you envision building out that road as part of yet additional build-out sort of, headed towards the track in that direction? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, um, both. I mean, we'd, we'd be building it to complete the loop, um, and we'd also be building it to enable additional development to the, this is actually, it's planned north, but it's to the east, so in this direction. Um, and um, so that it would be for both reasons. We've had similar conversations with the Water District about this, you know, like, like the town, the Water District wants looped systems.
Yep.
Um, and so they've been comfortable with this phase as proposed with the understanding that right after this phase, um, we're going to proceed with the Hackamore Extension, the loop to Front Runner, so that they, their needs are met as well.
And so you're not able to make that connection even from a subsurface utility like a water line, for example, standpoint, until you have additional, um, permits? That's what you're saying? Approvals?
Correct. And to, to put it in the right-of-way, where the right-of-way wants to be. I mean, we could do something frankly, kind of silly for a four-month period, um, and you know, run a connection here, but it's not where the road wants to be. We want that to be a park for the long term and have a, you know, a gridded road system that makes sense for, for the future, not for just, you know, a three or four-month period.
Right. Okay, um, I think that was really the bulk of my question.
Thank you very much. Roger.
I, I don't really have any, any questions. I think everything looks fine and the explanation for the timeline seems to be okay. Um, the only observation I would make is, um, these will be the, the first townhouses you're actually developing in this whole project. Am I correct?
That is correct. Yeah.
And these will be similar to what, what the townhouses at Eastern Village or down at Dunston? The same idea?
I mean, they're the same type of housing. Um, they're row houses, they're townhouses. They're aesthetically, um, kind of, I guess I'm teasing your next meeting, your next submission by saying this.
That's fine. That's fine.
Aesthetically, they're, I would say they're, they look more like single-family homes than, they have a front porch. They have a different aesthetic than those in Eastern Village and Dunston Crossing, but they're townhouses and we're excited to show, show them to you.
Yeah, no, I, I think it looks good and, um, I think, I think, um, everything's fine. The, um, I think the biggest concern was that connection and I can see where that's on the timeline. So I, you know, look forward to seeing further, um, meetings on this, on this project. So I'm all set.
Thanks, Roger. Rachel.
Yeah, um, let's take a look at the commons that you have there. Um, the commons, uh, on the other side of the cottages, the four, four, uh, cottage lots. What's, what's next to the commons? I, I noticed there's a green space there that doesn't appear to have, uh, it hasn't been mentioned in terms of any development. Are you planning on doing anything with that?
We are. Um, and that, so we're, part of our situation is this DEP limit, uh, Rachel. And we don't have enough land area there to, to then propose the lots that are going to be on the other side of the common. But the intention, and I apologize for not saying this earlier, I should have, um, the intention is to have four lots just like these on this side of the common. So if you, and this plan shows it pretty well. You know, the, the common that's under construction now has, you know, four lots on each side addressing the common. So those have been very successful. Um, buyers have been very interested in those. Those are entirely sold out, I think, at this point. And so we wanted to kind of replicate that pattern, um, in that environment. So the intent is for um, four lots to be on the other side of the common and have a, a similar alley to the rear to provide access to those. We've done, we've designed the lots a little bit differently. They're a little wider, they're a little deeper. Um, we've found that it's nice to have a little bit more breathing room, uh, in terms of house plans. But essentially, it'll be the same kind of program. And then next to that, Rachel, on, on this stub here, where it's not shown quite as well as this common, but there's going to be similar to the Front Runner kind of park. Um, there's going to be a green space. And at your next meeting, um, there'll be the townhouses. There'll be, we're proposing a townhouse building where my cursor is that fronts that green. And then also those two, two lots across the street would then front that green. And then the townhouses would look across at the neighborhood park. So we've kind of worked hard to have all the units face a common space or a park, um, given the success of the first phase so far.
Right, um, yeah, I, I, I do like the way it's all fitting together. Is the, the road, is that going to be an extension of Futurity? Is that what that is? Futurity Lane?
It's going to be the same construction. It's likely going to need another name, um, for E911 purposes. But it's going to be right across the street and it's going to be similar design. So we'll review that with public safety with your next app, with your next meeting. Um, we have a package in that will, that shows the design of that, the driveways off of it to the townhouses.
Okay, I assume that, um, the road, and, and by the way, this, this is small enough, it's kind of small enough, I'm looking at, at a magnifying glass to check the names of things. Um, I assume that the road that's at right angles to, um, Front Runner at the end of the townhouse development, is that going to be extended ultimately? Or is that, uh, the end of that particular area? Is that going to have a name?
Where my cursor is here?
Yeah.
That's going to be, um, an alley connection into the townhouse development. So that's going to be a, it's not going to be a public road. It's going to be a private alley maintained by the Townhouse Association.
Right, and the road stub that, um, uh, where the, uh, where the two duplexes are and looking on some of the townhouses, that's going to be continued to where ultimately?
That's going to continue. I'm going to go back to, this is a bit out of date because this is, you know, master plan level, but you're, and we're going to update this to be accurate to today's plans. But essentially, that road's in this location, Rachel, and it's going to continue around and, and link up. And you were just talking about like a stub here. So this is like that townhouse lot on the master plan. And again, this is older, it's about a year old. On the master plan, this is the townhouse site. Um, and then these are those other lots that we were discussing. So that road is going to continue on and go up and serve development beyond the townhouse site.
Right, it's, it's very helpful to see those sort of future connections as, as we go along. To see that it is, it actually is going to be connected, what the pattern is going to look like. And I appreciate the, the idea of perhaps updating the, uh, what is on the master plan. So we have a sense now of going forward because things do change. Um, actually, I, I have no questions. I, I think the development that's there so far is, is great. And seeing, uh, the continuity is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Uh, Rick Duperry.
Um, I, I have no issues with what they're looking for tonight. I think they did a good job with the, um, presentation and the paperwork. Like Roger, I'm very curious to see what the, uh, actual structures are going to look like, but I guess that's, I guess we have to wait for that. And, um, I'm kind of surprised Rachel didn't ask for some, uh, picnic tables and, uh, little, uh, playground equipment in the commons area. But I'm sure that'll, I'm sure that'll be probably included in the next presentation too.
I'll, I'll ask for that next time.
That's what I thought. I know, we're going to learn that. I had nothing good for the.
You know, word of warning, they, they know this. They know this.
Yeah, I know, I know. I knew Jen knew that. But I, I guess I didn't have any questions on this one. So I thought I'd start with what my questions are going to be next time. So, um, I think your presentation was good. And I have, I don't have any issues with this particular project at all.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, Rick Minkin.
Um, yeah, I guess the only thing I want to just get some clarification on is based on the fact that the Fire Department and the Public Works has indicated through, through supplemental, um, documents here that they would recommend the connection at this point. And I'm just wondering, with the conversations we've had tonight and has there been conversation with staff? How is staff feeling now based on, on the timeline that Dan has, uh, put out here? What, what's the feeling on this interconnection between, uh, Hackamore and Front, Front Runner Way, I think it is? I just, you know, I want to be supportive to DEP and, or, uh, DEP, but, uh, Public Works and the Fire Department as they're going to be involved in, in this neighborhood. At the same time, I understand, you know, the phasing in of this and the timing is, is, is important. So I, I guess I'm just trying to follow up on staff comments about the interconnectivity. And want to know where we're, where we're standing out. I mean, other and want to know where we're, where we're standing out. I mean, other than that, I, I think this is, this is a, a, a good, good plan to move forward with, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes by prematurely saying, yeah, we'll, we'll just skip that, that concern from the Fire Department and the Public Works.
Yeah, and Nick, if you don't mind, I can try to address some of that anyway.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, so I, I think your staff understands the applicant's discussion and sort of desire for the future that, you know, within three to four months, we'll really be talking about making that connection. And I think largely that makes a lot of sense. I think the one area that the town gets a little nervous at is the unknown of the future, that if this plan does get approved and who knows what may happen, it could be years until that connection's made. An unlikely scenario, we get that and understand that, but that's sort of the, the risk that the town takes by not including it as part of this process, particularly where the ordinance seeks to have interconnected streets. And so, you know, it's our, and this may be where I ask Angela to chime in. It's our understanding based on conversations with DEP staff that sort of adjusting the, the white line, I can't remember what it's called, the limited disturbance line or what have you, isn't quite, isn't anywhere near the same sort of lift that we're talking about with the future development phases. And so Angela, maybe I'll ask you to, to sort of make more sense of what I just said. But, but I guess before I ask Angela sort of get into the details, I would just say from the broader perspective, it's really that, that uncertainty of the future. And again, that's not to say that staff doesn't have, believe, you know, every word that's being said and that the Downs team has every intention. It's simply that no one knows the future. So that's, that's really the, the matter from planning staff's perspective. And as you noted, you do have memos from the Fire Department and PD. So Angela, I'll sort of ask you to dive deeper into details from there.
Oh, yeah, there was a conversation onsite with DEP. Drew was there and some of the repairs on site when we walked through DEP and one of the things that was talked about was future phases out here in this town residential piece. And the conversation I had with two DEP staffers were talking about that limit of disturbance. And where I think Dan had mentioned, it all, it brings back to a stormwater system that's already been designed. And so moving that line was not going through a full amendment, which they're doing now over a three or four month period. It would be, what was said to me was like a two-week period that they could just kind of look at, that area is already being accounted for within that gravel wetland and kind of moving that line around. So I guess staff didn't see it or hearing from DEP that, that that would have been a huge lift. And so making that connection now to just that insurance that would appease the safety concerns for Fire Department as well as the operation concerns for Public Works, because even with approval through the amendment we're talking about and the timeframe we're talking about, doesn't mean that it gets constructed. So even with permits in hand, doesn't mean that priority shift to other areas at the Downs. There's a lot of work going on in the Downs. So it's, it's a matter of how long does that sit not connected and where you have concerns from, well, three of the departments as well as Jay mentioned, the ordinance saying that should be a connection. I think that was the concern coming from staff.
Thank you, Angela and Jay for clarifying. Rick, you still have the floor?
No, I'm not in clearer thinking than I was before. But I kind of like the timeline and I, and I, I think, you know, the Downs has, has demonstrated, you know, the willingness to work with the town and has been able to maintain somewhat of a schedule that they've put out. So I, I guess I'm okay. Let's put it that way. I don't want to, I don't want to step on the, the public safety in particular, but I also know that it makes sense to do it in this, in this chronological order. So I, I think I'm okay with that.
Would like to just comment on the DEP limits, if it's a good time. If Jen's going to go, I, I can go after. It's for discussion, so.
That's, that's all I was going to ask about. Go ahead.
So that corner of our DEP limits is the only corner of Town Center Residential DEP approval that crosses a historic resource. So that's a pretty big element here is that it's not, I wish it was as simple as what Angela described because we'd be happy to shift limits. And I, I totally agree with her on the stormwater shed can handle this area as well as many of our other DEP sections that have been approved, but we're specifically not allowed to impact the outer track with our current DEP approval. And that requires the main historic commission, main historic preservation commission, the state agency to establish a different finding for the DEP review process. So that's one of the bigger components of our next DEP application is now that the lease is, is expired and no longer in place, we're proceeding with impacting the outer track. And as part of that, part of that, we do some additional work. So I'm happy to follow up with staff and DEP on, you know, what that review looks like, if there is a shorter review than the Level 2. But I know it's not going to be two weeks. I wish it would be, but that's the, that's the piece there that we've had trouble with avoiding the track.
So I,
Dan, this is probably a silly question, but can you round that? Can, can you keep, is there a way to keep that road out of the track? I mean, because it's just...
Well, that was, thanks, Rick. I mean, to my point earlier, the road, it really makes the park pretty, there's sort of the, the three or four month view and then there's the, you know, project build-out view in terms of where road infrastructure goes. So yeah, we could, we could make, we could make it go through that area. At the end of the day, it's probably not the right alignment. One of the ideas we could work through, and this is more kind of stuff we can work with staff on outside the meeting, is, is there a temporary road surface? Is there a performance guarantee? You know, there are things we can do on ensuring, you know, four to five month access during construction or a short period of time and then ensuring that the road goes where it should go and as soon as possible once we got a DEP approval. So I'm sure there's a way to, to figure it out. It's sort of coming up with the right, the right process to do that. And we're pleased to work with staff on that.
And just to follow up, I think, I guess I can appreciate the historic piece you're talking about because that is, I know a difficult lift and if that corner is, is the piece. But I think in order to address really the ordinance and our, and our operations and safety, then is there a way, there's probably a way to look at that right away. And like you had said, as future phases and securing funds, it really should be part of this project in order to secure that that connection gets made, which can show up on the plans. It could just be, like you said, maybe a future, so it's, it's Phase 2A and B kind of thing and that we're holding the money so that that can happen. So that then, I guess, that way it becomes part of this project. I think that would be the key. And that would seem to get around maybe some of that. And maybe Jay or Jamel speak to that. I'm not sure. But in order to keep this whole, I guess, it seems like, like you said, maybe there's a way to, to figure that out. Because there's no assurance that this will actually happen in four months, that connection gets made unless we put it as part of this project.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing I would offer, I think that's, I think that's really what, along the lines of what I was thinking as well, it's really about phasing and, you know, showing it on this plan. I think part of the, I know typically, you know, we talk about how we wait for DEP and DOT permits to be in hand. I think here we're talking about something a little bit different where we have a site, as we already sort of mentioned in some regards, that the, 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 the system's in place for the capacity. Now it's really about, you know, getting around sort of this historic structure piece, which we now know that, you know, the track is no longer in function. And so I think there is, I think from staff's perspective, yeah, there's, I think there's a way to look at this in terms of showing it on a, you know, local plan potentially that hopefully can secure, secure it locally, but not necessarily if the concern is, you know, take two months or what have you to get through the DEP process, slow down, starting on the other components, because obviously there's other things that need to get built out here. So construction takes time. And so it seems like, it seems like the pieces are all there.
Do you think these are just notes in the plans so that it is kind of in this subdivision? But it, it's not, it's not explicitly called out that it's happening right away?
Yeah, it's really about a phasing plan and those sorts of things. And, and, you know, I want to, I think as Dan said, work closely with, with their team to figure out how that works best so that it doesn't bind up anything else they're trying to do with DEP. We understand that that's sort of a, a piece to this as well. So, you know, I think there's, I think we're all in agreement. It sounds like, you know, the Downs team is in agreement to build it. And I think, you know, where we understand sort of the timing that they're talking about. And so really it's just from, again, from staff's perspective about ensuring that we can, how can we ensure that's the time? And again, not that we don't trust the applicant, it's, the town needs to, that's, that's part of our job is to be sure that when we're told something that it's, it's what happens. And so there's, there has to be a way. And, you know, whether that means we need to ask our town attorney to help sort of, you know, finesse that language or whatever that is. But I think that's really, I think for tonight's discussion, it's about the, the planning board providing that guidance as to, is that effort something we should undertake? But again, I think all the pieces are there. We're all sort of saying the same thing and it's just closing the loop.
I'm a lot more comfortable now after this discussion, based on what I've seen from the, the, the other entities from the town. So I, I think if, Dan, if you guys can work it out between staff and Downs, get it as a note on the plans with a timeline and, you know, kind of like a performance, I'm good with it.
Yeah, absolutely. We're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, so I think I would, I think, I think that's good progress. I think we can make all the parties happy and still kind of get you to where you want to go using that. Other than that, pretty clean plan. So I don't have all else to comment on. Look forward to seeing it again. Anyone else have anything? All right. So I guess we'll see you again shortly.
Okay, great.
All right. Next item on our agenda this evening. Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed amendments. Chapter 405 of the zoning ordinance to amend section 18.B, Higas Parkway, HB Zoning District. Jamel, I'm sorry, Jay.
Yep, I'll actually take this one. So this is a follow-up to a public hearing the board held back in 2020. I can't remember exactly what month, but, you know, within the last couple of meetings. As you recall, this is a property owner-initiated zoning change along the Higas Parkway to include drive-through restaurants as part of a plan development. When the planning board initially looked at the language, I think, you know, the board had some additional concerns, comments, questions regarding what was brought forward, particularly with regard to stacking and queuing, being sure we don't see things happening that would impact the public way. I think we had a, a conversation about that earlier tonight. Other areas were around the, concerns around the proliferation of the use along the Higas Parkway. And really ensuring that, you know, we say it needs to be part of a mixed-use building, that it really is part of something else substantive on the site. So with that, the planning board sort of said, you know, this needs some additional thought. So we went back to the Long Range Planning Committee with the applicant who's here with us tonight and had some further discussion. And so what you should have before you went in the packet is some recommendations that are coming forward, particularly around additional performance standards that were added towards the backend of the language that aim to address those concerns. So you'll see additional performance standards added in that talk about that the drive-through restaurant use should not exceed 50% of the overall building. So therefore you know it's going to be, there'll be some other substantive use, at least one other substantive use, that there'd be no more than one restaurant per plan development. I think the other big one is really talks about limiting the location within the Higas Parkway to within 1,250 feet of the high intersection of Higas Parkway and Payne Road, think of exit 42. This is a similar approach that's used in the B3 around the location of gas stations. So it was sort of borrowed from additional, or existing, I should say, approaches. Requirement that the use be located on a lot that's at least one acre in size. And that really leads and thinks about the next one, which requires there'd be at least 300 feet of drive aisle between where the stacking lane begins and the public way. So that there, there's, our, our ordinance requires six stacking spaces, but then you're also going to have this additional drive aisle that's off the public way. And that came from looking at existing drive-throughs in town and sort of saying, okay, this one doesn't work so well. Hmm, they're at, this, this one seems to work. Well, so, so it was really taking a look at some of those examples in the area and what seems to work pretty well for getting off the public way. Anyway, we understand, you know, based on the geometry, I think some of the discussion was, you know, there's some sites that have multiple buildings on them and there might be stacking between those buildings, but that's on a private site and in private parking lots. So it's not so much a public safety concern as it may be a hindrance to the businesses, but that's ultimately their design through this process. Anyway, in addition to those sort of performance standards to address the issues, you'll also see in this draft, there's a lot of sort of, I'll call them administrative edits, really just sort of moving some additional, some existing, I should say, existing language around to make the Higas Parkway ordinance which sort of, to make it flow like other ordinances do that talk about this type of process. So really I just talked about the substantive changes. Like I said, there's a couple of others in there that really are more administrative and not a type of policy change, but just things that really sort of make things flow similarly. So people know as they're reading through the ordinance what to expect. So that's my presentation of the applicant is here. He's had an opportunity to review this, of course. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jake. Appreciate it. So with that introduction, we do, this is an opportunity for a public hearing. So if you are in attendance and you did want to speak to this issue, if you could please use the raise my hand feature. Okay, seeing none. I'll turn this over to the board for comments. I'll, I'm just going to quickly, I'll, I'll start off with my, my first thought, which is, do we know how many, if this went into effect, how many could be built out on a Higas Parkway? Has anyone done any math around that?
I'd have to look at the lots, but I think there's probably, I would say four to six lots that it might be viable to. However, I will sort of say that some of those lots are already developed. So I'm saying it's, it'd be applicable to those, but as an example, the Accra Car Dealership, it's in a contract zone, it's going to be an Accra Car Dealership. I would still include that as one of these lots, but, but it has sort of a limited...
Okay, so your guess is four to six of these types of structures in place?
I would say, nope, I guess I'm saying that's the number of lots. So maybe two to three. Again, I, it's hard, I don't want to sort of paint a number because sites could be redeveloped. So.
Sure, of course.
Yep.
I understand. Okay. That was kind of the one big burning question I had. I'll just open this up in general for anyone that wants to raise their hand. Um, that was kind of the one big burning question I had. I'll just open this up in general for anyone that wants to raise their hand. Roger, quick on the draw. You're, you're, you're unmute. You want to unmute yourself, Roger?
This, this is a follow up to your question, Nick. You know, the, the, the approved plan that's across from Gin Road on Payne Road? That, that would be a multi.
Yes, this would, this, that lot would fall within the 12, that.
That would be an example where it could.
That would be an example where it could go. Yep.
And maybe possibly Carrie Anderson's, would, would Carrie Anderson's property outside of that?
I believe he's outside of that.
Okay.
Be close. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I'm fine with basically, you know, I, I noted, I noted in the minutes, the long range planning committee, you know, committees, meetings, the minutes that it was unanimous approval. So I, I placed a lot of weight in what, you know, their deliberations.
Thanks, Roger. Actually, um, Jay, for, for I take you, Rachel. Could you, could you maybe just quickly summarize some of the discussion that was had at the long range planning level? To kind of give us an idea of, you know, what, you know, what were they charged with a kind of maybe a quick overview of what it is they, they discussed and how they got to this point?
Sure. Yeah, I think it was really based out of the comments and questions that came out of council at first reading and were relayed to this board at their public hearing. And then this board really echoed. Again, it's really around that, those issues of the proliferation of the use. Ensuring that we don't run into problems with queuing stacking along the public way, particularly Higas Parkway, which is, you know, intended to be a, you know, an arterial for folks to move through town pretty rapidly. Or at least directly, I should say, hopefully not too rapidly. And I think those are really, and then the other one, I, I guess I should mention the other big sort of issue that was raised at both council and planning board was to ensure that the use really was part of a true mixed use building. And when I sort of say that, you know, that you don't have the restaurant use being sort of this predominant piece, and then there'd be some little add on to be able to say, aha, look, it's a mixed use. So that's where it was about sort of creating this idea of at least 50%, no more, I'm sorry, no more than 50% can be dedicated to the restaurant. So and I think really, you know, the, the, the proposal by the, or the conceptual plan, I should say, by the applicant, you know, was part of that discussion. Sort of looking at, well, okay, yes, we want the, the, the concept plan that's put forward seemed like something folks were interested in, but it's the unintended consequences. And so that's really what these performance standards were aimed at, at getting at. You're muted, I think.
Thanks, Jay. One quick follow up to that. Are you aware of any other ordinances in area towns, perhaps even Falmouth, that might address a situation like this already? And do you know if anyone had kind of looked into those to see how they've been operating?
I guess I'm not entirely sure how you mean.
If there's ordinance language similar is found in communities around us that have been in practice and they've maybe some verifiable results out of a language similar to this.
I guess I, I apologize for not fully. I guess, you know, we, as I said, we locally, we have sta- we borrowed the standard about the location within 1,250 feet of the intersection. That's currently in our ordinance in the B three. So that is something that we do have experience with and actually is sort of what led to the development of the gas station right there at the corner of Payne in Higas. If you're talking about sort of the requirements that it be at least part of, you know, 50% of another building.
That's, that's, yeah, that's kind of ahead of mind. Heads, have we seen some of this mixed building requirements used in other communities?
So we do.
If the answer is no, Jay, it's fine. I was just curious.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know in our, in our ordinance, we do have some uses that are only allowed as part of mixed use buildings. I don't think we ever have gone to the, 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 the direction of saying that it's going to be at least 50%. I think we've always just, you know, when we've used this type of language in the past, we've talked about being part of a mixed use building. I have, I'm not familiar with any, doesn't mean it's not there. I just don't know.
Okay, thanks. Rachel?
Yeah, I guess I had the same question that Roger had and, and, and that you had, Nick. In terms of 1,250 feet gets us where? And how many, how many potential sites are there in that? And, and I, I, I think that's important. Certainly, I, I would like to know that. And then would I assume that this would apply? If somebody wanted to renovate or rehab or add a restaurant to an already existing mixed use development, for instance, the development on the corner of Higas and, and Payne Road. I can't remember the name a bit offhand, but it's got, it's got the walk in clinic and.
Golf and ski.
Yeah. So suppose they wanted to put in a, a restaurant. That, would that be allowable under this?
Yes, that, that, that would be one of the sites that I was talking about that this would make it allowable there. There would certainly have to be some redevelopment of that site to enable that to happen because what we say is not, it can't just be part of a mixed use site. It needs to be part of a mixed use building. So somehow on that lot, they need to fit in another building that was of some size to have whatever size the restaurant is, something equal, if not greater than that restaurant size. Have the queuing for the drive through, have the requisite parking stormwater. So I don't think without some significant redevelopment of that golf and ski site that it could happen. I don't see sort of how that, that current building could be, not say couldn't, but you know, I'm not a developer, but looking at the site, I'm not sure how that existing building could just sort of be repurposed to include a drive through. Again, I don't mean to.
Yeah, I, I.
Say to this board that can't happen. I'm just trying to give you the.
Yeah, we have the devil in the details. In, in my way of thinking, there's a difference between a Panera on, in that site and McDonald's that figures out how to build on to a building. Assuming that McDonald's doesn't want to go solo anymore. In other words, we, we expect a certain standard along that area. And I, I just worry about having a proliferation, figuring out how to handle or avoid a proliferation of fast food. Understanding that if there's a drive through by definition, you know, they're, they're actually moving something out pretty quickly. So it's well, I go back to it'd be very helpful to me to see what we're talking about in terms of the potential opportunities of the lots that are there. Would it, for instance, accommodate a drive through restaurant in those two subdivision areas for the Beacon Apartments? They came to us, they have two lots on either side of the, of their driveway. Could they build on those lots? Did they build the drive through?
Here, Nick, I think it might be helpful. If I were to share my map, I can show you where 1,250 feet gets us.
That'd be helpful.
Let's see if I'm doing it. Am I sharing my screen?
Yep.
Are you seeing a map with blue lines right now? All right, great. I need to, I need to recreate these blue lines. Sorry, they're a little. Let me get started. All right. So, and let me bring up the zoning layer. So we also so we're talking about the Higas Parkway Zone. So I'm just going to really take this down and let me do another thing here that I think might help. So you can get a sense of the underlying. So if you, whoops, once again. No laughing at me. All right, there we go. All right.
Sort of like, I'm not really, or snickering, I'm not really laughing.
Fair enough. So 1,250 feet, I'm going to get as close, not exactly. Gets us just to the, just beyond that. Now I'm trying to, this thing right here is the sewer sanitary pump station. And so I think to someone's point, this is the lot, the one commercial lot or one of the two commercial lots as part of the gateway. So obviously I'm doing this on a inaccurate, imprecise map. But it gets you potentially close to that parcel as we head down.
Jay, could you tell me if it's, if the 1,250 ends, let's say 10 feet into that parcel, does that mean that that would then be available even though the access to it is a driveway that's further down on the, on the Parkway?
Yes, if, if it goes with it, it says that the part, the property needs to be within 1,250. It doesn't say the entirety of the parcel. At least as drafted right now. So yep, if it goes 10 feet in, then that whole property could be. So I would say this one is a potential. When we, when we take 1,250 up Payne Road. Hang on, let me try to start over.
The large one across the street from it, would that be also part of it?
Right here? Yes, 1,250 took us down to about here. So again, without, you know, without someone to, you know, based on what we're looking at today, yes, it's close.
1,250 by the road or by the house, by the crow fly?
Center end of the road, right?
The center end of the road. So it'd be a 1,250 radius. So it's a crow fly. So, so to that point, I did follow the road line. So it probably is even closer. But it's, there's 12, I bet 1,247 as you can see.
Okay.
So again, here I'm at 1,236. I'm also wherever the so I would say for all intents and purposes, if I would say, think that those two are available as the language reads it. You know, if there's some concern there, you know, language could be talked about ensuring that the entirety of the properties within that radius.
I, I'm just trying to figure out where it is. So the, the old famous Dave's, would that be able to be rehabbed into a drive?
Famous Dave's is in B three zone. So it's already allowed, it already could have drive throughs. So we're really just talking about things that are page south of Payne Road. This side of Payne Road, this is the Higas Parkway Zone. So when we take 1,250 down this direction gets us to around here. And I think this was a concern. I think it was Jen who brought up the concern about some of these smaller lots along Payne Road in particular. And that's where we came up with the one acre minimum requirement. So we're really talking about if I can try to do something else and stop doing this. Stop. I hope I stopped. Really? Yeah, oh boy, that's not going to work. Essentially, I'll just sort of draw that these lots, these two lots here. This is the Accra Car Dealership. Potential for this lot, potential for this lot. Then the lot in which the proposed development is, this is the lot where the golf and ski is. This lot is in the area. This is where Beacon is part of a contract zone. And then this parcel here. So what, how many lots is that? One, two, three, four, five, six, so seven or eight. I think I understood it earlier, Nick.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. And planning board members with their hands raised right now. A second as I scroll through. Rick Munking.
Uh, yeah, it's just a, I think it's just clerical at this point. But on page two of 10 of the actual ordinance where it has the, the laundry list of what is allowed. Number seven brings up the point about the drive through. But it says restaurants with no, and then drive ups is, is is deleted out. It says drive through service. Do we want that word no in there or is that, am I not reading it right?
Yeah. So what you're seeing there, Rick, is that's the existing language with strike throughs for those things we're taking out. And just for what it's worth, drive up, drive in service are things that were in the town's definitions that have been deleted. So at this point, we're really just, and then the reason we kept the with no drive through services because those are allowed as permitted uses. When you go to page three of 10, you'll see under the, actually right before number 29 on page two of 10, you'll see the following residential uses are permitted as only, as only as part of plan developments. That's where we say restaurants with drive through services.
Okay, all right.
So, so there's really two.
Okay, thank you. That, that helped me out.
So good, just a good example is, I, I don't think it was too long ago when this board approved a restaurant on the Higas Parkway further down the road. It was sort of going to be this wine bar kitchen thing, if you remember.
I remember.
Yep. So that's the type of restaurant that would still be permitted, not that wouldn't necessarily have to be part of a plan development.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. I'm all set.
Thanks, Rick. Jen?
Uh, that is almost exactly what I was going to ask, but the only addition to that. I'm, I am just a little bit curious, Jay, maybe you can elaborate about the deletion of the terms drive up and drive in. Because I noticed that, like Rick did, that those were striked. Those were struck from item seven here, but not notably not added back into that item 34 as part of the approved or a permanent use for that.
Yeah, I think this is part of getting to that sort of modernizing and updating the zones to be consistent. Like I mentioned, I'm sorry, I'm, you could maybe hear me flipping through my book right now.
On the fly.
Yep. So when you look at our definitions, we actually deleted the, the used drive in restaurant in 1994. I think that was to me, I didn't go back and see what it said in 90, 1994, but I think that drive in restaurant is sort of the, you pull up and you have that window side, you know.
Wouldn't it come out with roller skates?
That, you know, that was before my time, Ricky. I'll, I'll let you answer that. But yes, that, that, that's the general sense I get of what was intended by this drive up, drive in service. For what it's worth.
I only asked, and while, while if, I'm also definitely, that, that would be before my time too, but that, you know, that example while you know, accurate once upon a time does sort of seem to be accurate again in, in the very immediate future, you know? I mean, that's, that's basically what, what we're now calling curbside service, right? So place an order somewhere. Call, pull into a parking space, call when you get there and someone will come and deliver it to your car. So I was just curious about sort of the finer points, I guess, behind the term that we're using drive through versus those other two terms that were deleted.
Yeah, and, and thank you. The long range planning committee did talk about that a little bit. And just to be clear, restaurants, you know, as. restaurants, you know, as, as we're all doing now, is if we go to restaurants that we wouldn't typically think as a drive-through restaurant, we're pulling up, getting out of our car, walking in, grabbing our dinner, and then leaving. We can still consider that just a restaurant.
Yeah.
That, that's, we don't consider that a drive-up service, that's still, you're just going to a restaurant. You're just doing takeout. The Chinese restaurants have been doing this for, ever since I was a kid. We just seem to be doing it with other types of foods at this point. So. So the Long Range Planning Committee did talk about that quite a bit. And I, I do know, I'll just also offer that this is certainly something that as part of that discussion, want to keep on our radar. I think one of the concerns is sort of overreacting to the pandemic without understanding consequences. But certainly understanding that the pandemic is probably gonna change things even moving forward once we're hopefully through this thing. But not really fully understanding that yet. So.
Either way, I can see the, yeah, either way, I can see the value in sort of cleaning up terminology. I mean, to, to refer to something as drive-up, drive-through, and drive-in. Seems like you, you know, we could probably get it covered in maybe one term, which I think is what you're shooting for here.
Thanks, Jennifer. So, I mean, I think that's a, that's a pretty healthy discussion. What I, what I don't know if I heard is any sort of consensus as to how the planning board feels about the language. You know. I don't know if it's best to summarize as things that we like, things we don't like, or if it's, we like the way it's written and, you know, we can kind of get behind it. I'll, I'll just speak for me personally. You know, the 1,250 line, it's, it's, this is, it's a tough one, because it's like, hey, if, if you're gonna allow some of this stuff to go in towards the Payne roadside, but you know, how does the butter next to the 1,300 foot mark feel about, you know, his, his land value is now different than the 1,250 land value? Just because of what's available put there. So you, you kind of hate to see, see us doing something like that in the middle of a zone. But I also understand the concerns about trying to limit it, what we have going on out there. So. Really a tough decision in my world, but I don't know, how does everyone else feel about what the language that they're seeing as presented? Is it?
Well, I'm fine with it.
I, I think it makes sense, and I think the point that you bring up, Nick, is a good one, but would also, you know, really would apply to any zoning, you know, differentiation. We've looked, we've looked at that in a couple of other cases. Even, even when we make adjustments to that line, what does that do to someone on either side? I mean, there's always gonna be somebody on either side of the line. I, but I think, I appreciate staff grabbing that particular, I don't know whoever arrived at that actual number, but, but, but mimicking that or, you know, copying that distance here from other zones that we already have and use, I think is helpful because we can kind of point to that, you know, and it's not like we're using 1,000 feet in one instance and 1,250 somewhere else and 1,400 somewhere else. So I do think that there's, I think the consistency in that way is a good idea.
Thanks, Rachel.
Yeah, I, I think my concern originally was that this was going to be changed for one person. And actually seeing the number of lots that would be affected by it is a plus, as far as I'm concerned. Because then it isn't a special zoning change at the request of one developer. So I, I can live with it. I can live with language.
My only other thought on this would be, why, why just from the Payne roadside? Why are we not looking at 1,250 from the Route 1 side? And I don't know if that's ever come up in any of the discussions with long-range planning or council. But, and I don't know why we're dealing with this one right now. It's because we do have somebody who wants to put in something over there. But again, you just look at it and say, you know, why are we doing it on one side of, of Higgin's and not the other? But, you know, and, and I also ask myself, how, how long will it be before we get the guy that owns the 1,300 feet away, comes in and asks for us for a zoning amendment? So just, just stuff that rolls through my head at odd hours of the evening. So.
You know, Nick, that may happen, because I think that happened a couple of years ago on Pine Point Road. Didn't, didn't it, you know, right at, right at the intersection of Route 1 and, and Pine Point Road? Didn't we change the zoning to accommodate? It was like a beauty salon or something right there.
Yeah, I think that was a number of years ago, and I think that was, was it changed from an R4 to a TVC 2 or 3, it might have turned back. But I think, Nick, your, to your question, certainly, one of the things that the Long Range Planning Committee looked at, you know, when we started the conversation, was around sort of, well, I can share one of the maps that went into their discussion, if you're interested. But really taking a look at the different ways of approaching, I'm trying to figure out how to share this thing. Hang on, bear with me.
You also did it at, at the old fire station too, didn't we just change?
Yep. So I think you're seeing my map up there, is that correct? Yeah, so this was, this was some preliminary information or, or information that was provided to the Long Range Planning Committee as thought about the issue of proliferation. This was really went into, the, the discussion really started around, you know, these X's are, indicate certain distance separation along Higgin's Parkway, which was something council asked them to look at as one approach. We looked at a 1,250 foot circle from obviously where we wound up with the proposed language, as well as the southern end of it, which actually, for what it's worth, the, the Higgin's Parkway actually stops up near Scotto Hill. The B1 properties are in the B3, so it wouldn't be necessarily from, which does allow for drive-through restaurants, i.e. the Holy Donut right at the corner of Higgin's and Route 1, having a drive-through. So it actually starts up a little higher at Scotto Hill. So these were a couple of the different iterations or ideas that were kicked around at the Long Range Planning Committee. Again, ultimately lining, winding up on the, really starting as, on the smaller end. I think again, with the concern about the proliferation, sort of said, okay, let's, if we're gonna, if we're gonna sort of, you know, open this, open this up, let's think about limiting it as much as possible, and then see, see what the future holds. So.
Jay, do you have an ability to zoom in on the bottom circle outlier area real quick?
Probably.
What I'm really curious about, just what I'm driving at is, if you actually allowed it at 1,250 from that Scotto Hills spot, I think you've encompassed every property on the left-hand side of Higgin's, if you did both ends. And maybe minus the one, one parcel there, but it looks to me like that circle would catch that big piece. So it looks like maybe one or two spots would only not have, have that ability.
It looks, it looks as though it, on the bottom of Higgin's, that it actually goes into a residential district, including encompasses my house.
Yeah. So, but yeah, Nick, I think, I think you are right. It looks like, you know, picks up all these pieces. So it looks like you're missing maybe one, two, three, three or four lots would be about all that wouldn't be impacted if you did do it from both ends.
So at that point, you're just talking about a complete Higgin's Parkway zone change. Right?
And so, again.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, thank you for helping sort of satisfy my curiosity a little bit here. All right, so Roger loves it. Any other thoughts on, from the board? Jen, Rachel, Rick Minking, Rick Duperry?
I'm kind of in the same mindset of you and a little bit of Rachel too. I, I don't really like making changes to accommodate one particular business if it, unless it, unless it's, you know, a really good thing for the town, obviously, and the, and the people in the town. Well, just the people in town, but. But in this particular case, I don't see it, I think the language is okay, and I, I don't see a whole lot of drawbacks other than maybe slightly adversely affecting the residential folks in that area, but then again, they may look forward to some available takeout. So I'm, I guess I'm okay with it, but I'm not, not thrilled about it. I'm okay with it.
All right, thanks, Rick.
I can live with it.
Okay. Sounding endorsement there? Jennifer?
Um, I, I think, I think it's fine. I think it makes sense to, you know, that an argument could be made to focus on either end of the Higgin's Parkway as opposed to sort of making that change to the zone, the overall zone. From, you know, from a, from a density standpoint. You know, Higgin's Parkway is kind of a, to date, or, you know, for a long time, has been a connector and not necessarily a destination in and of itself. And so it makes sense, I, I feel like in keeping with that. And I think we heard from, the last time that we discussed this item, you know, the difference between this type of use being something that traditionally is sort of a pass-by, you know, it's, it's not always necessarily your end's destination, but a drive-through activity is usually of a bit more convenience. And so anyway, I, you know, I think focusing that type of activity at either end of this corridor does make some sense from a traffic standpoint and congestion density. Other than that, I think the, you know, the criteria that, that we're looking at, I think are fine. And appreciate the thought and certainly the input by, by the end discussion by the Long Range Planning Committee was helpful as well.
All right. Well, Jay, do you have enough feedback slash information from this board?
I think what, what I'm hearing, if I can summarize what I've heard from the board, is a general tacit agreement, that the language that's in place seems to do what's expected. And, but hearing a couple of board members say, sort of, I can live with it, it's fine, tells me that, you know, it's, I guess that's where I come up with a tacit.
I, I would say like, yeah, this feels a little bit like an experiment, and I think we're all hoping for the best. Somewhat a little nervous about what it could lead to, but in the meantime, we haven't figured out the better way to do it yet. So. Everyone says, let's give it a go and see what happens. I mean, it's, it's hard on ring a bell sometimes, so it, it does give you a pause. But at the same time, I mean, I think, think there are some steps here that'll go kind of past your typical zoning change. You know, the, the, the percent, you know, leasing space, I think is probably helps make you feel a little bit better about it. You know, as far as what proliferation could, could lead to down the road. So I, yeah, that's it. I, I think you kind of got it. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, good evening. I just want to thank Jay for working with us on this, going back and forth to the Long Range Planning Committee and to the planning board a couple of times. I know it's been tough to try to work this wording out, so that it satisfied most everybody's concerns, and I just wanted to say thank you. Our view, though, on, on the 1,250 was, we were always looking at it as our development had to be wholly within that 1,250. That's how I had interpreted that. I didn't think of a corner of our property touched the 1,250, the whole rest of the property, even though the building might be 1,600 feet away from the intersection, would have been allowed. I didn't look, I didn't read it that way. I suppose, Jay, someone could, but just, I just didn't read it that way, and I don't think the Long Range Planning Committee did either, but.
Maybe that should be clarified, or ask the council to weigh in on whether the actual building needs to be within the 1,250, or whether it's just a portion of a lot needs to be within the 1,250. It's probably a good clarification to have.
Well, I guess, and I'll, I'll, I'll put my, what I think counselors would then look and say, what, I wonder, what's the planning board's thought on, on that approach?
He almost got away with it.
I don't want to rewrite. I mean, I guess I would say, if you say entirely within the 1,250 feet, we're really looking at basically those parcels that are definitely most close to, obviously, closest to the intersection, but closest to Payne Road. And here, I'll show you what I'm looking at, that probably make, make more sense.
Well, Jay's pulling that up. We did talk about doing the contract zone change too, and you, if I remember right, the planning board was, even though we're surrounded by long, our contract zone, it would be better to do this zoning amendment. So we, that's the way we ended up going with Jay to the Long Range Planning Committee.
Really what we're looking at is these two parcels, this parcel over here. Yeah, really limiting it down to about three, three different parcels in which the applicant's really looking at combining these two, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I guess my initial thought is smaller is better as we test this out, and I'm sure if anyone is abutting it and wants to bring us, you know, an amendment, you know, there'd be a good argument for it. That's, that's my gut. I mean.
So that's an entirely within.
I would take the building.
Yep.
Maybe not the whole parcel, but the building.
Okay.
Yeah, I like, I like Nick's suggestion. I was trying to toy with things like, well, 50% of the lot has to be within, that sort of thing, but the entire building has to be within works, works for me. It allows a larger, it allows a portion of a lot to be outside of the 1,250, but the, the building itself is within. So I think that's a, that's a good recommendation.
Okay, problem solved. All right. All right, any other comments from the board? All right, thank you very much for that. Well.
Thank you.
Pass those along, and Jay, thanks for your efforts in advance to try to summarize what you've heard here tonight.
Yep.
Next item is the staff report.
I can jump in. I have a few quick things. Did have a pre-construction meeting with the main veterinary clinic at the end of Technology Way. They are underway with their driveway and temporary parking area project. And council has posted the name of a new planning board member. That's up for action at council later this month. So perhaps at your next meeting, you'll have a new, a new member to complete the board membership. That's all I have.
Jay or Angela? Anything to add to that? Jay? No? Okay. Administrative amendment report?
Not at this time.
Correspondence? Planning board comments? Roger?
Just to Jemel, any status on the Accurate Dealership?
There have been rumblings or conversations about a potential updated building design. I think Jake can fill in as needed, but no definitive timeline as of yet.
I think Jemel touched on it. We've heard they're interested in getting going come construction season, but haven't seen anything as of yet.
Good.
All right. Any other planning board comments? All right, well, I will just say that I, I look forward to 2021. Alright, well, I will just say that I, um, I look forward to 2021, because, you know, it's gotta be better, right? So, uh, I, uh, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion to second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, everyone. Thank you, everyone, so much.